Welcome to the city councils. September thirteenth, regular city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff and members of the public participating in city council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to provide, to promote social distancing in this federal state and local emergency. I would like to introduce city council members and staff present Vice Mayor Jen Woolison, city council members Drew Combs, Ray Mueller, and Cecilia Taylor. Staff present include city manager Justin Murphy, city attorney Nira Doherty, and city clerk Judy Heron. City clerk Karen, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So again, echoing a welcome to our regular city council meeting of September thirteenth. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, I will ask that our virtual attendees engage that hand feature in the bottom of their screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. And for any in-person public comment, we'll ask that you come directly up to the podium. That concludes my introductions at this time. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members under city council member reports. Does the city council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? All right. Public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the city council cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up under public comment other than to provide direct general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the city council on any item under agenda sections, presentations and proclamations, study sessions, consent calendar, public hearing, regular business information items. City clerk Karen, please call for public, general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment, please step up to the podium. This will be the final call for general public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Proclamations and presentations. City clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on items E two or E one?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our proclamations, E one, supporting the reopening of the Mackey-Michelson therapeutic pool, or E two, recognizing September twenty-two as suicide prevention month, ask that you engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please step up to the podium. And I'll ask our in-person public commenter to start first, and if you could state your name. Thank you.
Thank you very much for inviting me, Mayor Nash, and I'm Councilwoman Cecilia Taylor. My name is John Butler. I live on eight ninety-six Middle Avenue downtown Menlo Park since December first of nineteen eighty-eight. And I am grateful to have this opportunity. The proclamation states, whereas Menlo Park residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other and preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate and reaching out to local twenty-four-seven resources, including our local San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis Hotline, which is six five oh, five seven nine, oh, three five oh, or National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, not which is nine eight eight at this time since July, or one eight hundred, two seven three talk. Um. This year marks the fortieth year of my diagnosis of mental health challenges, which is today called major depressive disorder with psychotic features. I am grateful to the county of San Mateo. I have been a client at South County Mental Health on Brewster Avenue in Redwood City since the spring of nineteen eighty-nine and have received, I believe, excellent care until I got to a point where I could take care of myself. I came into Menlo Park following my beginnings of my relationship with suicide with an attempt in August nineteen eighty-eight. And a couple of months later, my wife had abandoned me, which is typical for those of us with mental health challenges that our families abandoned us. And it took me a long time to stop hating her for that, but I recognized that like with other family members, it's hard to understand what mental health crisis means and I could not support her as a good husband and explain to her because I was helpless myself. I know that there are many people here in Menlo Park that are the way I was for many years, over decades, as a matter of fact, could not help myself and was not aware of resources. And I say to you in Menlo Park today that there are lots of resources through San Mateo County, and I hope working with Mayor Nash and Councilwoman Taylor that we could bring to your awareness how many and how beneficial these resources are. And I pledge myself to sharing those resources and letting you know that help is possible, recovery is possible, and there's hope beyond what you may feel or experience today. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Sandy Nappel. If you can please let us know which item you are commenting on.
I'm commenting about the Michelson Pool.
Perfect. Thank you. Go right ahead.
I was very happy to and surprised to see that on the agenda, but I am very interested in supporting the reopening of the Michelson Pool. It has been closed for quite some time. And I am the father of a thirty-two-year-old man who has physical disabilities. And he, for many years, was receiving therapeutic swim instruction in that pool, along with many other people, I am sure. And we sincerely miss the ability to engage with a therapist in that pool and help increase mobility and balance and all of the other deficits that my son has. I know that when I speak for him, I'm winding up speaking for many others in the same position. And I would just like to see everything done possible to reopen that pool and establish the ability for my son and people like him to be able to receive therapy for their physical disabilities in that pool. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on items E one and E two. Seeing no further hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much. And thank you so much to Mr. Butler and Mr. Nappel for your moving comments. Menlo Park cares. The first proclamation tonight is supporting the reopening of the Mackey-Michelson therapeutic pool. Whereas the Mackey-Michelson Arthritis and Rehabilitation Center Therapy Pool is an Americans with Disabilities Act accessible warm water therapy pool operated by Sutter Health and located at the Mills Health Center in San Mateo, California. And whereas the Michelson Therapy Pool was constructed over twenty-five years ago using charitable contributions from residents of San Mateo County to serve as a centerpiece of an arthritis center created by Mills Peninsula. And whereas the Michelson Therapy Pool has been used for over twenty-five years by thousands of residents of San Mateo County who suffer from a broad range of health issues, including permanent disabilities, debilitating injuries, autoimmune disorders, and mobility impairments to rehabilitate those health issues and mitigate physical decline. And whereas Michelson Therapy Pool has historically provided both preventative and interventional therapies to residents of San Mateo County suffering from health issues. And whereas there is also an apparent and growing need for the services provided by the Michelson Therapy Pool due to San Mateo County's rapidly increasing number of elderly residents who are highly likely to suffer from health issues requiring a warm water therapy pool. And whereas Michelson Therapy Pool is the only pool of its kind in San Mateo County, and there are no comparable warm water therapy pools that can adequately accommodate the residents of San Mateo County who previously relied upon Michelson Therapy Pool and who are now suffering from acute and chronic physical pain and mental anguish without it. And whereas in spite of the critical need for the facility in June twenty-twenty-one, Sutter Health Health announced that it would permanently close the Michelson Therapy Pool to independent use by patrons. And closing Michelson removes a valuable healthcare resource for people to assist them in daily activities. And whereas over forty-three-hundred patients, caregivers, and community members have signed a petition to reopen the Michelson Therapy Pool in order to increase the health, independence, and dignity of residents who rely upon it. And whereas Sutter Health, its subsidiaries, and affiliated entities receive significant financial benefits from their operations in San Mateo County. And this city council is aware that warm water therapy pools in the region are able to operate profitably and safely, including under COVID-nineteen protocols. And whereas in light of the foregoing, the city council believes that Sutter Health should be called upon to reopen the Michelson Therapy Pool and to maintain the same open access hours that were in place prior to January twenty-twenty. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that I, Betsy Nash, mayor of the city of Menlo Park, recognizes that promptly reopening the Mackey-Michelson Arthritis and Rehabilitation Center Therapy Pool for community use with the same open access hours that it had prior to January of twenty-twenty would preserve and improve the health of residents in San Mateo County who have historically relied upon it or who could benefit from warm water therapy to maintain their health, independence, and dignity. And this city council calls upon Sutter Health to reopen the Michelson Therapy Pool and to maintain the same open access hours that were in place prior to January twenty-twenty. Thank you. I would like to introduce Jane Stoll from Warm Water Wellness to accept the proclamation.
Jane, it doesn't look like we're able to hear you just yet.
There. Now I press the right button. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Nash, Vice Mayor Watson, council members Mueller, Taylor, and Combs. I'm Jane Stoll. I'm Secretary of Warm Water Wellness. On behalf of the hundreds of pool users who relied for so many years on Michelson Therapy Pool for exercise, rehabilitation, and quality of life, I thank you most sincerely for this proclamation. You probably know someone who used the Michelson Pool. Pregnant women, children with special needs, people recovering from joint or heart surgery, stroke victims, anyone with chronic pain, they all were able to rehabilitate in the pool and lead a happier and healthier life. For many, the closure has meant rapidly deteriorating health, and some are now unable to walk or do the things that most of us take for granted. The warm healing waters of the pool meant life itself to so many people. On a personal note, my husband Steve used the Michelson Therapy Pool in San Mateo for more than twenty years. The pool helped him through two hip replacements, heart surgery, and arthritis. Through regular use, he experienced substantial pain relief, increased fitness, and a better quality of life. This action by Sutter Health is unconscionable. And this, along with the closure of many other community programs like Senior Focus Adult Day Program, is unacceptable. To that end, we collaborated with supervisor David Canepa on a recent letter to the state attorney general to investigate Sutter Health's use of federal cares funds and their not-for-profit status. This proclamation demonstrates that you truly care about the seniors and the most vulnerable populations in your community. We are deeply grateful.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all you're doing to get this reopened. Appreciate it.
The second proclamation tonight is recognizing September twenty-twenty-two as suicide prevention month. Prevention, prevention month in September, National Suicide Prevention Week, September fourth through tenth, and Suicide, World Suicide Prevention Day, September tenth, to spread the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas San Mateo County will join the country and state in honoring Suicide Prevention Month, September, National Suicide Prevention Week, September fifth through eleventh, and World Suicide Prevention Day, September tenth, to spread the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas in twenty-twenty-two, fifty-four people died by suicide, thirty-four percent increase from eighty-two in twenty-twenty in San Mateo County. And whereas in twenty-twenty, twelve thousand, two hundred, ninety-seven contacts were received by the San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis Hotline. In July twenty-twenty-two, the Star Vista Crisis Hotline received a ten percent increase compared to July twenty-twenty-one, likely due to the debut of the nine-eight-eight number on July sixteenth. And whereas Menlo Park residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other and preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate and reaching out to local twenty-four-seven resources, including our local San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis Hotline or National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. And whereas residents can also play a role in suicide prevention by supporting local suicide prevention month events, advocacy days, and communication campaign. Across the city, county, and state, the twenty-twenty-two September Suicide Prevention Month theme is Take Action for Suicide Prevention: Thriving at All Ages. And whereas beyond September, Menlo Park has joined the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative where mayors across the twenty cities in San Mateo County have come together with the mission of promoting awareness of and access to mental health resources in their community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Betsy Nash, mayor of the city of Menlo Park, state of California, hereby designates September twenty-twenty-two as Suicide Prevention Month and calls upon everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. I would like to introduce program manager of clinical services at Star Vista Crisis Intervention and Suicide Prevention Center, Brooke Pollard, to accept the proclamation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Nash, council members, city manager, staff, and residents of Menlo Park. My name is Pollard. I use she/her pronouns, and I am the program manager of clinical services at Star Vista Crisis Center. Mayor Nash, you did a great job. It's a very wordy title, and you nailed it. I am also a member of San Mateo County's Suicide Prevention Committee. And I just want to thank you all for the proclamation and thank you to the city of Menlo Park for pressing upon the importance of this public health crisis. Suicide Prevention Month is especially important to me because I believe it will take all of us to create a suicide-safer community. I myself have personal and professional experience with folks who have thoughts of suicide and have even had suicide behaviors. And it really takes all of us. There are not enough mental health clinicians in the world to help those who have mental health challenges and are thinking of suicide. So it really takes us all to create that suicide-safer community. I was going to talk briefly about what our Prevention Month theme is, but Mayor Nash did a beautiful job with that. And I really think, you know, pressing upon the importance of thriving at all ages. Suicide is one of those things that knows no age, no demographics. And so it's important that we look out for all ages of life, not just maybe one or two that seem more in the media or something like that. There are lots of ways that you can get out there and support Suicide Prevention Month. The first one that's maybe a little easier and more accessible to folks is to wear purple and teal. Purple and teal are the colors for Suicide Prevention Month. Some folks wear the nifty little ribbon. Some folks just wear the colors. I think it's a great way, you know, when someone comments, oh, I love what you're wearing, or what's that ribbon for? It's an invitation to talk about suicide awareness and prevention, a topic that is already hard to bring up for most. Like Mayor Nash mentioned, we have our local hotline, which is housed by Service to Crisis Center. The number is six five oh, five seven nine, zero three five zero. And we work in partnership with the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, which can be accessed either by dialing nine eight eight or one eight hundred, two seven three talk. Those are really important things to save in your phone. You never know who you might be engaging with, who might need that number in that moment. And then lastly, we have a lot of free wonderful events, either virtually or in person, hosted by our committee as well as community partners. If you are curious and want to maybe join one of those events, you can find more information at smchhealth.org/suicide-prevention-month. And you'll see a full calendar of that. So thank you again for recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month. It goes a long way in raising awareness and creating that suicide-safer community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pollard, and thank you so much for what you're doing for our community. It is incredibly important. Next, we move on to the study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The city council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the city council for action. The study session item tonight is F one, Menlo Park Community Campus Project Updates, including Recreation and Community Programs Survey Results. To introduce the item is Library and Community Services Director Sean Reithart and Interim Assistant Community Services Director Rondell Howard. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. It's wonderful to be here tonight to talk about this very exciting project and provide a number of updates. And in particular, to go over the recently completed resident survey about recreation and community programs. Joining me here tonight is Interim Assistant Community Services Director Rondell Howard. So we'll just dive right in. So tonight's presentation will cover these items shown here. We'll talk about some upcoming city council items related to the MPCC project. Just briefly touch on environmental sustainability features of the project, some new furnishing layouts, some updates about construction tours coming up that the community is invited to, a few other updates that are in the staff report. And then we'll dive into the resident survey and seek council feedback on programming considerations that the survey brings to mind. So just to start quickly, there are a number of upcoming city council items relevant to the project. October eleventh will be the authorization for staff to issue a request for proposals for an aquatics operator for both the Burgess Pool and the MPCC Pool in November and December and on into January, February, some additional city council meetings, as you can see here on this slide. This is also covered in the staff report. Briefly, the project has multiple environmental sustainability features, quite impressive, actually. On June twenty-second, the Library Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission met in joint session and received a pretty complete presentation about the various features of the project. Those are in attachment B to the staff report. We'll just share one slide here quickly. It provides a good overview. This is an all-electric facility, no fossil fuels burned. Empowering this facility is being constructed to lead platinum building standards. That's the highest designation. Heritage trees are being preserved. It's a very resilient building that makes prestigious use of solar power generated onsite. And that energy is captured in a microgrid battery array to provide additional resiliency in the event of the power grid being unavailable. Also, in the staff report as attachment C, are new furnishing layouts, renderings to show what the actual furnishings would look like in the new facility. Quickly, I'll just breeze through these views. They are in the staff report, but just for reference and for those watching at home. This is a view of the senior lounge, which is on the first floor, kind of looking from this arrow here in this direction. Here's what a more fully rendered view of that would entail. The architects put this together to give a better sense of and to evoke a better sense of what it will be like to be in the facility, including specific furnishings, specific textures that are specked out for the facility. In this case, the senior lounge and the left pool table, which is right now over at the main library. We anticipate bringing that back over when the new facility opens. Another view is of the children's library. You can see kind of the line drawings. These are taken straight from the computer model of the building that the architects and construction contractor are using. This particular view, I think, is from this corner, looking toward kind of the entry to the children's library. And here is kind of a look, a really inspiring and fun space for young people to come. Also adjacent to that, just beyond this wall off to the right, is a wonderful outdoor children's terrace, extending the usable space of that children's library. And then on the second floor of the Makerspace, it seemed to lend itself quite nicely to a rendering of this nature. This also is an indoor-outdoor space with the indoor Makerspace here with a lovely outdoor second-floor terrace overlooking Kelly Park. Here's a view from inside the space, looking at the utility tables, the actual stools. I don't think we're going to use a sewing machine quite that antique, but they have a sewing machine here to demonstrate the types of activities that can be done here. And you can see beyond that outdoor terrace looking over Kelly Park, and there are some heritage redwood trees that are preserved and still there on the site. This is called a dollhouse view. This shows what the first floor will look like with the furniture in layout. So this is that front entry to the building here on the first floor, right here, kind of an entry corridor of the children's library that we just saw the rendering of is in this location with the outdoor terrace next to it. What's not shown here is there's actually a low wall that really kind of separates this from the rest of the park. This is the, I'm sorry, this is the senior lounge that was shown in the earlier rendering. What's not shown here is the gymnasium. That's over in this area. So the building's a little bit larger than what's shown here. And then just quickly up on the second floor here is that Makerspace that we just saw a picture of, as well as that outdoor terrace. You can see over here is the second-floor library space, just kind of showing all of the furnishings as they would be in layout. And again, this is in the staff report as attachment C. Moving on quickly, there's some information about construction tours. Community members are invited to come experience the project while it is under construction, and in particular, Bellhaven neighborhood residents are strongly encouraged to come check it out. Here are some upcoming dates here, in addition to some of the focuses of each of these tours. More information again in the staff report on that, but we did want to make note of that. And then there are a few other updates in the staff report. I won't go into detail here, but happy to answer any questions that there may be about them, including updates about the project timeline, temporary change to the entrance of Beechwood School related to some construction work in the parking lot, some kind of preliminary information about a parking management plan for the project, which is coming to city council later this year. And then some information about the pool heat pumps and a potential exception to the noise ordinance that is going to the planning commission, I believe, in October. And then with that, I think we're going to turn to the main item here, which is a review of the resident survey results. And here to walk us through those is Interim Assistant Community Services Director Rondell Howard.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Mayor Nash and city council members. Glad to be here. Just to go over this, we just have a few slides that that kind of pertain to what was given out during the survey. So our survey results here are a combination of our recreation and community programs that we offer. This survey was developed with input from our MPCC Subcommittee Working Group and our Park and Recs Commission, as well as our Library Commission, and as well as our city council members. So thank you for your input on this. working group and our Park and Recs Commission, as well as our Library Commission, and as well as our city council members. So thank you for your input on this. Also want to note that our working group is primarily of our Bellhaven residents. So it was some nice input from from them to get these these questions out. The survey opened on June 13th, and then it closed August 10th. It was distributed in paper and electronic, as well as in both Spanish and English. Well over 900 responses responses, and this complete survey is attached to the staff report under attachment A. Here we have one of our questions that we that we reached out. And it's what neighborhood of Menlo Park do you live in? And and noted here, if you can see that every neighborhood within Menlo Park is is well represented in this. So that was good to to see and understand. Going to our next slide. The next one is how long have you lived in Menlo Park? And as you can see, there's 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 a mixed number here, which is another great a great showing of how long we have a good mixture of long time and and new residents that are within the city of Menlo Park. Can you guys hear me better? Does that work? Okay, got it, got it. No worries. So here in this slide, we asked the question, how important are the following community programs and classes? But one of the things I do want you guys to kind of to know is how how these answers were were scored and how we categorize them, right? So people were asked to rate each question. And the items as not important, somewhat important, are very important. And so with the responses, we had, we numbered those all with one, two, or three, and then averaged them out to create where we at these these charts that you see. So with that, as you can tell, or understand that line two, if you see a two, it it represents the midpoint of somewhat. Anything rating rating higher than a two is a is is a under very important, then anything lower than that, survey takers, that will that will rate as lower than a two, it would be less important. Just real quick, just to route out, as you can see, the top, the top three there is music performance. We have health, health and wellness, and as well as a fitness center. So some of the things that rank that rank pretty high within the community. Next slide, please. Thank you, Sean. Here, we've asked community members, what programs and classes? And how important are them to you in the following items? And and here, survey takers rated this, the needs of the Menlo Park residents more important than significantly more important than attracting outside residents just to generate higher fees. So super important to kind of note. On this next slide is how important are the following athletic programs? And we have a, we have a host of different athletic programs that's within the city. But some main ideas to take from this is that a a lot of our survey takers rated casual drop-in play, our casual drop-in play more than our organized league play. And also our surveys is rating rating our youth athletic programs more important than league play. Or then adults, I'm sorry. So our more youth activities or more more youth programs are more important than adult ones from what the survey has has given us. Again, survey takers rated that focus on the needs of the Menlo Park residents far more important than programs that primarily attract non-residents that just generate fees. And this next slide is for the is for city library information resources, and how important are these following items? Something to take away from this is that each one of the line items have have scored above two. And not all that's listed here has been offered within the city. But it's definitely something that that's important throughout our community. So when you think of that, we think of something that was rated high is like homework help for our teens, job skills, as well as job seeker resources and and healthcare navigation. And then with that, I will give it back to Sean.
Thank you, Rondell. And so we're wrapping up the presentation here to move into the discussion. So some programming considerations that staff is seeking city council's feedback and direction about really kind of stem from these survey responses and some of the insights they give us. And so just moving into kind of a summary of what the staff's takeaways are, and we'd love to hear city councils' feedback about this, is to prioritize the program elements that survey respondents rated with the highest relative importance to include programs that aren't currently offered on a regular basis, but that were rated with high importance by survey respondents, such as, as Rondell mentioned, homework help for children, job skills, job seeker resources, food insecurity advice and support, healthcare navigation and support. These are things we don't currently offer, but that were rated fairly important by survey respondents. Also considering programming and classes that are free or or that have discounted fees from Menlo Park residents as being a priority. And to consider deprioritizing programs that primarily exist to attract participants from outside Menlo Park. And to also deprioritize programs that survey respondents rated with low relative importance. Also looking at prioritizing casual and drop-in play opportunities for children, especially Menlo Park residents. That's something that came through in the survey responses. And then just to note that the survey also covered aquatics, but the city council did review those results in depth last month, and it will come back next month as part of the RFP process. So that's kind of a brief list of some of the considerations. There may be others that the city council has in mind. We'd love to hear them. Some next steps is that staff will continue to work with stakeholders, including the MPCC Subcommittee and the Working Group of Residents, the Library Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and other relevant parties to develop the MPCC program planning and incorporate all of that feedback, especially city council's direction into that process with the goal of presenting preliminary staffing and program options to city council tentatively in January or February of the coming year. And we've reached the end of the presentation, and we happy happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item F1 Menlo Park Community Campus Project Updates Including Recreation and Community Program Survey Results, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. For any in-person comments, please step up to the podium. And our first speaker will be Jackie Sebrian.
Hi, I just want to say, so Jackie Sebrian, I am a termed out member of the Library Commission and a current member of the Complete Streets Commission. Anyway, I just want to thank you for all the work that has gone into this building, like so much community work went into getting us here, and you have done a great job. I went on one of the tours. I am super excited to see actual walls around all that metal structure, but it's beautiful and the setting is amazing. And I just like, I just want to express my gratitude for where we are and all the work that's gone into it. And I look forward to enjoying it, all the parts of it, as I think I qualify to be a senior now. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment on our study session item F1. Seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. We are now open for a city council discussion. Is there anyone who wants to start us off? Well, I will just echo what Ms. Sebrian said, which is that I just, I really appreciate all the effort that's been made for outreach to the community and with the survey and now with you're working with the MPCC Working Group, and it's just, it's a wonderful collaboration, and it's exciting to see it coming forward. Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you. I echo the mayor and Ms. Sebrian's appreciation and excitement. I have a couple of questions. So the survey data was for all respondents. I'm guessing that was presented. Did you slice the data at all by Bellhaven residents? And were the answers given consistent with all respondents or any different? And then how does that compare to the feedback you've been receiving from the working group?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's an excellent question. We have done some preliminary cross-tab where you kind of just separate out what were the responses of a particular subset such as Bellhaven residents. Our initial review showed that the variance was not really super substantial. However, it was worth kind of exploring in more depth as part of the planning process. So although we don't have that information here tonight, you know, there's quite a bit of it, and we are looking at that. But but so far, it doesn't seem like there's any really strong deviation just yet.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I would, I think it's wonderful, the the feedback we've received. It makes sense to me. I'm not surprised that the preliminary review isn't that different. But if there are things that stand out, I think it is worthy of chewing on that because I know this is so long awaited for the residents in that particular neighborhood. And then I'm curious what the other data that you've received, what the plan for that is. So like, I noticed in reading the comments, quite a lot of pickleball comments, which might may or may not be relevant to Kelly Park and the MPPC, MPCC. But I'm curious what the next steps are with the other data you've collected.
Also, a great question. The survey did cover a number of areas that aren't necessarily relevant to the MPCC, such as pickleball. So depending on which area, we we plan to use that data. For example, with pickleball, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be reviewing the pickleball pilot program next month at their October meeting. And this data will come into play in a in a big way as we kind of analyze what to do with that and where to go from here with pickleball. Similarly, the aquatics program is kind of being treated in in kind of a separate process. And and that's that's kind of the case with a lot of the other information here.
Thank you so much.
Other comments? Councilmember Taylor, do you have any comments to add?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. At this time, the only comments I have is just about including, and we talked about this, I believe, at the MPCC Working Group meeting, is including possibly some project-based learning. And that's my only comment, Mayor Nash. I think the the presentation that staff did and the information that's been gathered has been thorough. And this is not sure if this is the midpoint or towards the end, but I know that there's still opportunity to capture input from the working group, from council, and then also the general public and our commissioners. So thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like that's the feedback at this point. It's a wonderful job. Do you have any questions about direction or it's pretty clear interest in the, any additional survey information? And we're looking forward to the aquatics and the pickleball and other any other information.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Feedback is always welcome, very much appreciated, and we'll we'll continue from here. We have what we need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion, unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. Is there any city council discussion or questions on the consent calendar? City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our consent calendar items, G1, City Council Meeting Minutes, G2, a resolution to continue conducting city council and advisory body meetings remotely, G3, authorizing the city manager to sign a public improvement agreement for the Menlo Portal project. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine. If you're attending in person, please proceed to the podium. And this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, G1 through G3. Seeing none, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Just want to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do I see a second? Vice Mayor Willison. City Clerk Karen, could you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, we have a motion on the floor by city council member Taylor and a second by Vice Mayor Willison to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Combs.
Yes.
City council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Public hearing. Public hearings are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The public hearing is H1, Adopt a Resolution to Abandon a Public Utility Easement at 248 Oakhurst Place. To introduce the item is Associate Engineer Adrice Rangene. Adrice, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Adrice Rangene, and I'm an associate engineer at Public Works. The item before you tonight is Resolution to Abandon Public Utility Easement at 248 Oakhurst Place. Little background, this easement vacation is subject to a summary vacation that consists of a two-step process. First, a determination by the planning commission. And second, a final action taken by the city council. On July 25th, 2022, the planning commission adopted resolution confirming that the proposed abandonment was consistent with general plan and recommended approval of abandonment. Here we have the site plan for reference where my cursor is. That's where the street is, and also where my cursor is. That's the property line. And what I have highlighted in yellow is the 10-foot easement being recommended for approval of abandonment. The recommended action is to adopt a resolution ordering the vacation of the 10-foot white public utility easement running through a portion of the existing structure at 248 Oakhurst Place. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I will be available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rangene. Are there any clarifying questions from city council before we open the public hearing? I would like to open the public hearing. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our public hearing item H1, Adopt a Resolution to Abandon a Public Utility Easement at 248 Oakhurst Place. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine. Joining us in person, please approach the podium. This will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item H1. Seeing no hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and open for city council discussion. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I would be inclined just to move on this. It's it seems like this is a, you know, sort of a historic artifact. And, you know, prevents the homeowner from exploiting the property in a a normal way, and obviously is not being used for any in a a normal way and obviously is not being used for any other sort of utility or public purpose. And so in that way, I would move and have no objection to this.
Thank you. I will second the motion. City Clerk Karen, please state the motion and call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Combs and a second by Mayor Nash to adopt a resolution ordering the vacation and abandonment of a 10-foot wide public utility easement running through a portion of the existing structure at 248 Oakhurst Place. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is I1, Provide Direction on Preferred Middle Avenue Conceptual Design and Adopt a Resolution to Install No Parking Zones on Middle Avenue, Install an Always Stop at Middle Avenue and San Mateo Drive, and Authorize a Temporary Closure of Lake Street at Middle Avenue. To introduce the item is Assistant Public Works Director Hugh Louch.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to produce, introduce this item to you. Before I start, I do want to thank a couple of members of my staff, so or the public work staff, so Kevin Chen and Esther Young, who've spent a lot of time working on this project, helping lead some of the outreach and engagement efforts and and the design that has gone into this tonight. As well as to thank the members of the public, we've had a tremendous amount of participation in this project throughout the process. And our Complete Streets Commission members who've also been very engaged and involved. So really want to thank everybody for participating. It's it's what makes a project great from a staff perspective. Can I do this or do you do this? All right, next slide. Thanks, Judy. So just to tonight, what I want to do is walk through the project goals, give you a little bit of background, spend some time talking about the outreach that we've heard. It'll be a quick summary, not not all the depth of what we've heard. And then describe the options and recommendations that we got from our Complete Streets Commission and that we're bringing forward to you, and then talk about what our next steps are. So let's start by talking, excited, thanks. Let's start by talking about the goals. So the goals for this project were established by City Council. And they came forward as part of a couple of years ago, you know, project priority setting. And the what they are are to enhance bicycle and pedestrian visibility and improve safety of all users, to provide safe and comfortable cycling and pedestrian infrastructure, and encourage sustainable modes of transportation, and to increase accessibility of the corridor by supporting improvements related to Middle Plaza and ongoing study of the grade-separated pedestrian and bicycle crossing, which is supposed to go under the railroad tracks. It's another project we're working on. So the two projects are kind of closely linked. And so we use those goals really to shape how we conducted the project as we move forward. Next slide. So just a little bit of background on Middle Avenue itself. I think most folks are pretty well aware of the street. So the city owns about 65 feet of right-of-way within the corridor. And about 42 feet of that is paved with sidewalks adjacent on one side of the street and then partial sidewalks on the other. And the, right now, the way the street is designed is for most of the corridor, there are kind of edge lines that demarcate the parking. I mean, it's what you might call a wide parking lane, so there's a little bit of extra room there, but not separation for bicyclists and not something that meets sort of our standard transportation guidelines for how we design bike lanes. The speed limit varies on the corridor, so part of it is 25 miles an hour, part of it is signed 30 miles an hour. Those of you who've been out there recently will know that there are these new 15 mile an hour speed limit signs when school or when children are present that we've been putting up, and middle is one of the places you see those related to a couple preschools. And we're still in process on that, but those are coming forward. Next slide. So let's talk a little bit about the public outreach that we did for the project. And we can go to the right onto the next slide. So I wanted to start with just a summary at a very high level of all the different outreach opportunities that we had. So we did do a lot of publicity for the project. We did send postcards to everyone who lives on middle and on nearby streets as well as businesses. We had changeable message signs. We had those out again for this meeting to make sure folks were aware. This was being discussed. There's a lot of social media presence, and we really tried to get the word out so that everyone would know about the project. We did hold sort of simultaneous in-person and virtual meetings. You know, this is sort of a fun experiment as we were coming back from the pandemic. You can see a bunch of us out there during the rain. Several of you participated, and we appreciate that. And we really appreciate the folks who came out to that meeting. And we had as many or I think more folks participate on Zoom at the same time, but for about a total of 100 folks at those meetings. We also conducted an online survey, and you can see there are over 600 people responded to that survey. And this gives you a little bit of information about where they live. They tended to live on or nearby middle, but we did have some from elsewhere in the city as well. And then in, since we've sort of been going through the process, we also had a couple of different Complete Streets Commission meetings where we first presented the findings of the outreach and then discussed with them their recommendations. And we had a lot of public participation then. And then following on from that, we had an info item that came forward, of course, last council meeting. And then there was some additional council member-led outreach that took place after that time. Switch mics. That mic is bad. Sorry about that. About it. I can tell that's much better. I apologize. So the, just some quick findings from the public outreach that we had. So we did have a lot of support for the bicycle and pedestrian improvements that we were talking about. Lots of concerns about bicycling safety, especially for the kids that are using the street, and there are a lot of kids using the street to get to a couple nearby schools. There were some concerns expressed, and there have continued to be some concerns expressed about removing street parking from one or both sides, although an overall preference for that, as I'll show you in a moment. And there was a lot of concern, and this has kind of been consistent throughout and sort of mirroring, I think, the direction we got from council, really to look at speeding on the street, and then also to look at, you know, so really it's kind of traffic calming, and then also to look at some of the larger vehicles that use the street and whether or not they're appropriate for that street. Next slide. It's a little funny in here, but the online survey that we conducted, one of the questions we asked folks, I mean, there are a whole bunch of questions. We can get into those in more detail, was to to give us information about what their sort of general preferences were. And what we found was that no matter who you asked, whether we were, and so we kind of sliced the data a number of different ways for the folks who live on middle or the folks who live nearby, the people who are there to visit the park or who commute on the street or use it to get to and from school, or really anything. The general preferences that we heard were to remove parking from at least one side and and a slight preference to remove it from both sides. I mean, that's sort of the overall finding that we have for that. And and I would say that's sort of consistent, although I will say we did also hear from folks, certainly who are concerned about the removal of parking as well. Next slide. Okay, so now what I want to do is turn your attention to the conceptual design options and recommendations that were presented in the staff report. So if we go on to the next slide, what we're going to do is, what I'm going to do is talk through essentially three major sets of improvements and then a couple other items that came up along the way. So I want to start with the corridor traffic calming. That's really, as I say, one of the most important things that we heard from folks as we were going through a lot of this work. So we start there, and we'll talk about the bicycle facility that was pursued or evaluated and and recommended. And then some specific improvements at the major intersections. And then finally, there are a few other things for the driveways, and and that we'll get to in just a minute. So when we go to the next slide and talk about the kind of traffic calming options. So here, what I want to do is just make it clear that what we heard, I think, was to provide a kind of consistent set of vehicle speeds along the corridor. And we heard from the public this desire as a way to bring the speeds down from the 30 miles an hour in particular, that the the kind of western segment of the street has now down to 25 miles an hour. And what we heard from the Complete Streets Commission really was to, you know, use staff judgment to be able to create that flow of traffic that would allow us to get to those more sort of reduced speeds along the corridor. And then there's just an image here of the, some speed, it says speed hump, it's really a speed tables or raised crosswalks that we have out here on Laurel Street. And we have them also on Willow and a couple other places in the city. So these are the, some of the types of improvements that we would be looking to implement. But other options that we're talking about are the flashing beacons, like the ones we have, you know, out over here on Ravenswood, and we have a bunch on Santa Cruz and a number of other locations throughout the city. We're talking about a stop sign, as was mentioned, and we'll get into some of the details in a minute and some other similar kinds of improvements. And again, these sort of serve to to slow vehicles down as you travel through the corridor. Next slide. So then on the bicycle options, we really primarily talked about two options. So this slide shows you what we call a cross section. So one of the general design of the street at sort of one point in the street, and of course, streets vary a lot over the course of the street. But, you know, the existing conditions, as I mentioned, are really sort of parking with two lanes for driving, one in each direction, and then sidewalks on one or both sides. And what the options are to install biking or to either remove parking from one side, in which case you get, you can install bike lanes, and these are generally buffered bike lanes, although there might be relatively small buffers where we retain parking on one side or to remove all the parking, in which case we're able to install somewhat larger by buffers and somewhat wider bike lanes as well. And then on the next slide, I just have two kind of examples from the city that have sort of give you a sense of what those two different treatments look like. So on the top, you've got Ravenswood between Middlefield and Laurel. And you can kind of see what that looks like. That has no parking on either side, but does have buffers. And then on the bottom side, you have Oak Grove that's between Laurel and Alma, that picture. And they're facing in opposite directions, so that's not confusing for folks. But you can see that there's parking, buffered bike lane, travel lanes, and then another buffered bike lane on the other side. I mean, I think just to address something that's come up in the public comment, there has been a little bit of confusion about if we retain parking on one side, are we doing bike lanes on both sides? And the answer is yes. This, the proposal is to do bike lanes in both directions, just either removing parking from one side or from both sides were the options that were considered. So then what I want to do quickly is just sort of walk you through the corridor and kind of show how these treatments sort of flow out through the corridor. And and there's a little bit of complexity because, of course, in the middle of the first section here, so this is the section from El Camino Real to University, you can see that we have Neeland Park, which is is right there, kind of in the middle of the picture. So here, you can see, and this is the example based on the recommendation that came out of the Complete Streets Commission. So we've got mostly, we've got parking removed on the north side of the street. We still have parking on the south side of the street. And then one of the other things we heard, and we did a lot of parking evaluations around the time when the sidewalk was going in in front of Neeland Park, and found that it seemed like it would be possible to remove the head-in parking, which is a potential safety concern, and replace it with parallel parking. So the little green area would then sort of be a bikeway that sits behind the parallel parking, and the blue area would be parallel parking that would be kind of outside of that. And we'd have to work out some details on the design there, but that's the rough kind of concept. Oh, and I should say, one other thing that's important here is that this whole thing has been compressed. So the width is greater than than the length. So we're trying to fit everything into a sort of smaller set of segments, so not to scale, but should give you a good sense about where things sort of fall in the corridor. And then you can see also, we've already installed as part of that sidewalk project, a rectangle, the RFB at Blake, that's in operation today. And there's a proposal to install a raised crosswalk there. And then we also show a couple speed feedback signs potentially, although the location of those is very much to be determined. So then if we go to the next slide, the next segment shown here is San Mateo to University. So this segment, we also show again kind of bike lanes on both sides, parking on, in this case, so we flipped the side that the parking would be retained on if you were keeping parking on both sides. So this case, it's on the more the north side of the street. You can see another raised crosswalk and flashing beacons at Arbor, right in front of Lyle Park and near the New Community Church and the preschool that's there. And one thing we did hear from the church, from conversations with them, is a very strong interest in retaining, making sure there's parking opportunities on Sundays. And we have started to collect some data, would can collect additional data about the use of Middle Avenue on Sundays to determine if that's a potential impact on that that would be difficult to absorb on the side streets or on other locations. So that's something we're very much still looking into, but we have started to look into that a bit. And then you see sort of on the far left of the screen, the proposal to add a stop button, always stop sign at San Mateo and middle. Right now, there's a two-way stop on San Mateo, but the traffic on middle is not required to stop. And then the third segment of the quarter from Olive to San Mateo, again, we have proposed, at this point, we're looking, thinking about a raised crosswalk at Cotton and potentially another speed hump that would be somewhere else along the corridor. And again, you can kind of see how these interventions are sort of routinely spaced throughout the corridor. But other conditions in terms of the bikeway remain the same from this segment to the prior segment that I showed. So hopefully that's reasonably clear and sort of reading this kind of diagram. And then the color red on these various slides has been, sort of shows you where the parking would be removed, so entirely on one side. And then where that red is dashed, that's because that's existing no parking zones, either because of fire hydrant or or one reason or another. There are a couple of different reasons that might be. Then we can turn to the intersection improvements. And so we heard a number of different things. So I want to start with El Camino. El Camino will be, especially as we pursue the undercrossing of the railroad, a very significant crossing for people on bike and on foot, obviously with Middle Plaza opening also a lot. We anticipate a lot of increase in folks making that crossing there, and we know that people do already use that today. And so we looked at a few different options. And you can see, one of the ones we considered and we think might make sense to try to pursue is what we call a dedicated intersection. And I realize that we're going to be into some sort of obscure terminology, and I apologize for that. But essentially, what this does is provide for the people who are crossing El Camino Real a separate path. You can kind of see it there illustrated in green, and and this is very much an illustration, not a design drawing. So important not to get too caught up in the dimensions or or the way things look on this. It's really just to show you that there would be a separate path for folks to travel, kind of recognizing, and it would have some greater protection for people on bike and and people walking than might otherwise exist. Now, that may require some right-of-way from either Safeway or the gas station or both. And if it did, that obviously would take us more time and and have additional cost. But there are some things we can do more near term or midterm, I would say, that include things like improving this, you know, some of the signal improvements that are listed here. So a leading pedestrian interval is something, you know, we see, and we have a number of places in town already, and we could certainly pursue here. There are things like no right turn on red signs. We call them blank-out signs, so they're blank when you're allowed to, but when they turn on, they're they're lit up, and it's very clear. We're in the process of pursuing one of those, for example, at Newbridge and and Willow as part of the Bellhaven Traffic Calming Plan. So there are examples like that that are coming into the city, and I'm sure folks have seen those. There are also, we could adjust some of the way the turning movements happen with some protection of the left turns. And then even beyond that, we could start to pursue a potential bicycle signal if we wanted to separate that movement greater. So that's sort of a menu of options that we might consider, or we might pursue. All of that requires kind of close coordination with Caltrans, who of course is the owner of El Camino Real and would have to approve any of these improvements, although there has been openness certainly from Caltrans for these types of improvements. So then I want to talk about two other intersections. So one is at University Drive and one at Olive Street. And for both of these, there are currently right turns. And for both of these, there are currently right turn pockets from Middle Avenue as you head westbound onto each of these streets. We did some data analysis and determined that a single lane could accommodate those movements. And that has a advantage of simplifying the number of movements that are happening at any one time, which has a potential safety benefit. And given that we determined that we didn't anticipate congestion, we presented that to Complete Streets, and they were supportive of removal of those. And then another, something else that came up and kind of came up through the process was this idea of a potential mini roundabout. And a mini roundabout is, as it sounds, a small roundabout. But it's very much designed to enable the benefits that you get from a roundabout. And there's very good research from the federal level and from lots of studies of states and cities that have implemented lots of roundabouts, that there is a strong safety benefit from a roundabout and really for all different user types. And the reason why is because roundabouts bring the speeds of vehicles down. And also, they reduce the total number of conflicts you have at any one time as you move through the intersection. So there are definite safety benefits. That being said, we recognize, and we talked a lot with the Complete Streets Commission about this, that this would be a relatively new treatment for many folks in Menlo Park. Many do not have a lot of experience using roundabouts. And when you do new things like this, you know, it's very important to to ease into it, I think. And so we proposed potentially it as a pilot if we were going to pursue it. And certainly, we heard from Complete Streets and agree that a strong kind of education campaign that would go and be part of that and really some close evaluation as we went to make sure that it was working as expected. And so we have heard a lot of concerns and interest in this, I'd say, in both directions. And it's something that's certainly worth further discussion as we move forward. So then just wrapping up the types of improvements quickly, we had a lot of discussion with the Complete Streets Commission around potential conflicts coming out of the Safeway and the Shell Station Gas, Shell Gas Station. And the, you know, I think what we determined from that and what we heard from Complete Streets was, we really need to monitor this situation. And as especially as we see sort of bike volumes increasing, determine if we have ongoing safety issues that might need further attention. And there is one driveway at the Shell Gas Station that's very close to the intersection. That's sort of not, if you were building it today, it's certainly not the way you would install a driveway. It's not the only access point from Middle, but it's one that may be worth looking at removing. That's certainly not something the city can do on its own. We'd have to do that, you know, if we had acceptance from the property owners. That's something we've started to talk to them about, and Complete Streets very much encouraged us to do so. But they didn't want any action now on the Safeway driveways. And part of the reasoning for that was that, just given the number of grocery stores that are available in town, getting access to that from all parts of town was something that, you know, they wanted us to be cautious about. And we certainly heard from the public about that as well. And then, second to last, we have a proposed temporary closure of Blake Street. This emerged actually as a petition from the residents of Blake Street. That came early in the process. It was something we talked about at both of our Complete Streets Commission meetings and something that they, the Complete Streets Commission was supportive of. There's an example from Clover Lane just off Willow here that is a way that this could be done. I'm not going to say this is necessarily exactly how it would be done, especially not as a temporary measure. But that if this was supported, you know, we would work with residents and find a way. And we would certainly, as we did this, make sure that we were retaining access for emergency vehicles, which is critical, and also remain open, obviously, for people walking and biking. And then the last thing we did hear very much from this process was a desire to complete the sidewalks along the southern side of Middle Avenue. And you can see there's about 3,000 feet of Middle Avenue on the south side that doesn't have sidewalks. The north side has continuous sidewalks. Based on other recent projects that we've been completing, you know, we're pegging that at about four million. We'd have to sort of refine that estimate, obviously, as we went forward. It would also necessitate, you know, a fair amount of removal of trees, including quite a few heritage trees. It would require moving and adjusting individuals. Irrigation that's been placed in that area and things like that. And that's been the case when we've done other similar projects. And so what we recommend is that, given the cost, given the a little bit of complexity, and honestly, given the challenge in getting grant funding for a project like that, that we might think about adding that to the five year CIP program and then pursuing that, you know, as we're able to over a number of years to close that gap. So tonight, the action that's in front of you is to, first of all, provide direction on those project recommendations I just walked through. So those kind of five sub bullet points there, talk about traffic calming, parking and bikeways, and those other three things, so the gas station driveway, the temporary closure at Blake Street and the sidewalk, adding the sidewalk to the CIP. And then we have a resolution that's been drafted that would remove parking on one side and about 24 spaces on the other side. And one of the things we did very much hear from the Complete Streets Commission was to look at, there's a long vigorous discussion about it, and I think to look at, you know, sort of maximizing the parking removal that we thought we could do as staff while retaining some options for parking. Then the second part of the resolution would add a stop and always stop at San Mateo Drive, and then that authorizing that temporary closure. And then, so if that were to be adopted, the last slide walks through what the next steps are. So the first chunk of the quarter that I showed you, that El Camino to University, that is a condition of approval of the Middle Plaza that Stanford University is developing. And so we would, once authorized, kind of work with them to finalize the design and start to implement the project in that area. And then from University to Olive, that's something where staff would commence design likely by hiring a consulting firm to support us on that. And then also start to pursue grant opportunities to support implementation, especially of the, some of the traffic calming stuff, which is the likely to be the higher cost items in that design. For the Blake Street closure, if authorized, we would do that as staff. That's something that we would be doing with kind of fairly temporary materials. And we could main fit that within our existing sort of operational budget. And then the other thing we did hear from folks and we do intend to do is to start to do or continue to do, honestly, data collection. So we already do, as a city, collect a lot of traffic counts throughout the city every couple of years. So we would add some streets. I think there was a list of streets in the staff report that may not have been fully complete, so just wanted to acknowledge that that was meant to be sort of examples. But we would work as staff to identify all the streets where we would collect data and then, you know, and sort of parallel and intersecting streets. And then, as I already mentioned, we'd continue to collect parking accounts in the corridor. And we have started to do that and can answer questions about that if there are any. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Louch. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comments on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on regular business item I, one, provide a provide direction on preferred Middle Avenue conceptual design and adopt a resolution to install no parking zones on Middle Avenue, install an always stop at Middle Avenue and San Mateo Drive, and authorize a temporary closure of Blake Street at Middle Avenue. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. For anyone in person, please approach the podium. And our first speaker will be Bill Kirsch, followed by Lori Holyoke.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, City Council members. Thank you so much for all the work you do, and I'm very happy to see the City Council back live. If I had known I would be there in person to make these comments. I support the strongest recommendations that we can do. Removing parking on both sides of this corridor, removing park, the perpendicular parking in front of Neeland Park. I'd like to see implementation of the raised crosswalks. This is a heavily used corridor, east-west corridor by bicyclists. I'm both a cyclist on this corridor and I drive my car on this corridor. And when I attempt to drive the speed limit, I'm tailgated all the time. So we need to slow traffic down on this road. This corridor is serving three or four schools. I see very young children escorted by their parents on bicycles. There's no reason why we can't slow cars down. You cannot do that through police surveillance. You need to design the street to slow traffic. I'd also just ask the City Council members, I know it's hard to remove traffic, to remove parking, excuse me, but I want you to keep in mind the project goals that you all set for this project, which is to make cycling and and walking convenient and attractive. And to me, you know, we have these climate action plans, but they don't hold any credibility to me until we deal with the automobile and try to make it convenient for other modes of moving around the city so that some folks, if they see safe and attractive options to the automobile, they might get out of their automobile and try a bicycle or walking. And I think if if you show courage on this project, you can really read, lead the city into a future where we have a chance of meeting our climate goals. So, again, I thank you for your service, and I ask you to show some courage and do what you know it needs to be done here for the future. Because what you do now is going to live for a long time. And finally, anything that you might be on the fence about with this project, we might consider trialing, trialing, removing parking on both sides if that may be too difficult to do today. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Lori Holyoke, followed by Adina Levin. Lori, you should be able to unmute yourself and engage your microphone. Okay, Lori, I'm gonna go to Adina Levin and then return to you. Because it doesn't look like we're able to hear you just yet, so we'll be right back with you. So our next speaker is Adina Levin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Adina Levin. I live in Menlo Park, not far from Middle. And I use the street on average daily and maybe sometimes more than once a day. Mostly biking and walking because it is so nearby. And really glad to see this coming forward. There has long been, you know, people wanting to see traffic calming to improve safety. And this is, you know, all the more important, there's going to be more people in the area with the Stanford developments opening up. And with, you know, so many children that are using the parks and the schools as well as more people coming that are, you know, going to and from Stanford, where Stanford has strong policies that encourage people to bicycle. And we can take advantage if it is really as safe as it can be. Speaking of, and so what I would want to see is to have things made as safe as they can be. Want to really support what Bill Kirsch had said earlier on in terms of making the choices that will maximize safety, including removing, potentially removing more car parking. And if things are difficult, then to trial them. Having pilots is really a great way to see if something, you know, works and does not cause problems. Or if things don't, if things do cause problems, they can be reversed without a high cost. Will, do want to see the protected intersection at El Camino. That is going to be highly used, and that is going to be a potential safety risk hotspot. And so would want to see that being moved as much as possible. And to, yeah, the safety improved as much as possible. And last, almost lastly, I do support adding the missing sidewalk section. But because of the cost, we have so many safety improvements that are already in the queue in the city. I wouldn't want to see current safety projects that people have been waiting for deferred further. So maybe put that in the capital improvement plan in order to surely get to it in a future year. And lastly, in terms of occasional parking overflow, like from a church, I live near a church, near downtown activities. And if there is like occasional holiday overflow, that's that's fine. That's a price of living in a city that has people having activities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So I'll be returning to Lori Holyoke, followed by Maya and Neil.
This is Lori Holyoke. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Lori.
Right. Thank you. I live on Walea Drive, and I am concerned about this four way stop at San Mateo and Middle. And the reason I'm concerned is I think it's going to just create a lot more traffic going down Walea Drive. And Walea is already, and San Mateo, they're they're a dangerous street because the street curves and because people don't always obey those yield signs. And so if there's going to be increased traffic because people have stopped, and maybe they say, oh, well, I'll take this cut through this time. If there's going to be more traffic and it's already dangerous for bikers on Walea Drive because of that curve, I just think it's dangerous. And I, I think the flashing lights is a is a great idea. But I think that the four way stop isn't necessary, and I don't think it's going to make it safer. And that's it.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Maya and Neil, followed by David Alfano. And I'll ask Maya and Neil to state your last name for the record.
Yeah, this is Maya. The name is Wolf. I wanted to point out that many of the comments in support of the parking elimination are from people who don't actually live on Middle Avenue. We live on Middle and, you know, commented online pretty extensively about our concerns. But the fact that only three people who actually live on this street were aware enough to get involved in the discussion and everybody who lives on the street who commented is very clearly against elimination of parking tells you that there's some sort of mismatch of desires here. It would affect us greatly. I'm not going to reiterate everything that we wrote in our comments because I think it was pretty clear. But essentially, making us bear the brunt of the rest of this project is probably worth considering. Like, we all want it to be bikeable. We bike, you know, we're in support of that. But eliminating street parking is really going to affect the residents of the street.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is David Alfano, followed by Sandy Nappell.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hi, I'm David Alfano. I live at 650 Kennelwood Drive. Good evening, Mayor Nash, members of council. Thank you for letting me speak. I'd like to start by thanking members of the city staff as well as the Complete Streets Commission for all the effort that's been put into this activity. I've attended and spoken at committee meetings, and I felt heard. Additionally, I appreciate the outreach from members of council with the community. And I feel that the staff has really done a fine job of accommodating the needs. and also balancing the desires of the community. And the rewriteable sign on Middle Ave this week was a, was a nice touch. I'd just like to be on record in support of option one from the staff report for bicycle facility improvements with the class two bike lanes and a two-foot buffer parking being removed on one side. I also like the detail of varying which side of Middle Ave is restricted for parking, depending on where one is on the street. And I think that the plan as shown earlier, when Hugh was going through the plan, indicates my preference as well. I'm, I'm certainly opposed to a two-way class four that terminates on a through street. So I, I hope that that does not get considered because it leads to confusion at the endpoint when you have the transition. I very strongly support the installation of a removable bollard on Blake Street at Middle Avenue. And I think this will contribute very highly to the safety and quality of life in the community. And I support installation of stop signs, a four-way at Middle and San Mateo. As a cyclist, I would prefer that the stops be only on the Middle Avenue travel lanes. And that would create a bike way similar to Bryant Street in Palo Alto. But I feel like it's a reasonable compromise and a fair traffic calming to be installing the four-way stops. I'd like to thank you very much for your efforts for allowing me to speak tonight. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Sandy Nappell, followed by Kate Piper.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy Nappell and I live at 445 Blake Street in the Allied Arts section of Menlo Park. I first want to applaud the city for recognizing the opportunity to improve bike and pedestrian safety along the Middle Avenue corridor. And I'm supportive of many of the observations and suggestions made in the report referred to city council last month and under consideration tonight. In particular, I strongly support the closure of Blake Street to automobiles and trucks at Middle Avenue. This will make the intersection and particularly the crosswalk much less confusing and safer as it will eliminate the left turn into Blake Street from Middle Avenue westbound, which at present encourages westbound drivers to pass cars who are waiting to turn left onto Blake Street on their right. A very dangerous situation at a crosswalk. The new lighted crosswalk is indeed an improvement, but it's not as effective when a car is stopped waiting to make a left turn. So closing Blake Street in this way will also eliminate cars turning from Middle onto Blake for the purpose of executing a quick three-point turn to get back onto Middle in the other direction. And finally, closing Blake Street in this way will make it much safer for pedestrians and bicyclists to get from all parts of Allied Arts to Nealon Park and out to Middle Avenue. I also support reducing the speed limit along Middle Avenue to 25 miles an hour and installing additional stop signs at busy intersections along Middle Avenue, such as San Mateo Drive, which sees a lot of bicycle traffic. However, I do not see the need for any roundabouts, such as the one proposed for Middle Avenue and University Drive. A roundabout, in my mind, doesn't slow traffic. Conversely, it actually encourages maintaining forward motion and therefore speeds traffic compared to the stop sign that it would replace. And as for eliminating parking on portions of Middle Avenue, while I would like to see the bike lanes wider and safer, my only request is that the residents who live in these locations have a voice. At least one search resident tonight has voiced a concern about this. For some who require frequent visits, for instance, by caregivers and support services, this could prevent, present a hardship to them. Thanks again to the commissioners and the city council for taking its work seriously. I think there are a lot of good ideas here and I look forward to seeing the proposed improvements come to life. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Up next is Kate Piper, followed by Ted Callahan.
Hi, I'm Julia Piper. My mom is Kate Piper. I'm 11 years old and I'm here with my parents. I live on Blake Street and I support closing the street so that it's safer for all families that use Blake Street to walk and bike to Nealon Park and the schools around it from Allied Arts. Thank you for making my neighborhood safer.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Ted Callahan, followed by Ashley Callahan.
Can you hear me now?
Quite a bit of an echo, Ted. You may need to mute the device you're listening on.
How about, how about now? Is that working?
That's much better. Thank you.
Terrific. A good evening, council and fellow residents of Menlo Park. Quick context on myself. My name is Ted Callahan. I live in, live at 759 Middle Ave at the corner of Blake Street. We have three children who have attended all of the different public schools, Oakdale, Hillview and MA. And our kids bike to school every day unless they're raining or really whining about being too tired. And I myself ride probably three times a week on Middle. And then occasionally walk from my house to New Community Church on Middle as well. Thank you so much for the thoughtful process to engage the community. A number of us were actually among those out in the rain with you back in March. So really appreciate the process. I wanted to go on record saying I support the goals of traffic calming. However, my years living on the East Coast in Cambridge, Massachusetts, I actually have concerns that removing parking could encourage cars to drive faster, not slower. Since the wider and straighter the road, the faster drivers usually feel comfortable driving. It's been my experience that the narrower the road, the more caution drivers, bikers and pedestrians exhibit. Similar to some of the concerns that I heard, I believe it was Maya said, I'm opposed to the elimination of parking on Middle generally for the, I think, the impingement on life for those that live on Middle. It could represent especially those that are in the apartment building. So I applaud the suggestion of being nuanced in where we would remove versus add the parking if we have to go that route. I also want to go on record saying I support the closure of Blake Street for all the fantastic reasons that Sandy mentioned. So thank you very much for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comments. So our next speaker is Ashley Callahan, followed by David Yoshida.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, City Council and the commissioners and the staff who've worked so hard on this project and the thoughtfulness goes recognized by me. I, I live on Middle Avenue. I'm a mother of three school-aged kids who bike every day. And I just really thank everyone for the thoughtfulness that have, that's been going into the development of Middle Avenue. It matters for safety, for residents, for our community, and I thank you all for that. I'd like to mention that I think it is easy to, to recommend removing all parking if you're only using Middle Avenue to commute, but not quite as easy if you live there. We love our community and we need opportunities at certain locations on Middle Ave to be able to park for the overall benefit of life and living and connected connectivity. So I, I stand behind the recommendation of thoughtful park, parking remover, removal, removing it in most places, but leaving it on the south side between El Camino Real and University, across from Nealon Park. And then again, remaining past University on the north side, past New Community Church. I think that helps the, the long blocks with no other alternatives for parking and the apartments and the community members to, to live, not just commute. And I also in strong support of the Blake Street closure. I think it's going to really help the community as a whole. So I thank you for that recommendation. And, and I have a couple, couple questions in addition. I'm wondering if we can add some bike safety classes at Oakdale and Hillview. I think that bike lanes will increase safety, but training our kids how to make good choices is going to impact that a lot as well. I also, because I live across the street from Nealon Park, one of our neighbors almost got hit in the brand-new crosswalk that's beautiful and more effective just this last week. And it made me wonder if those raised crosswalks shouldn't be, say, 30 feet before the crosswalk on either side or something? So that the cars actually slow down before they hit the crosswalk because this neighbor was almost hit because the person wasn't paying attention. And if there was something there, it would have caught their attention beforehand. And then the other one, I, the other street I'd like to have evaluated is Maywood Lane. It is a private lane that's kind of tiny. And my kids report that that's one of the most dangerous places for them as cars sneak out without seeing them. So if you just take a look at that, I think that would be great. Thank you all. Appreciate, really appreciate your thoughtfulness.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is David Yoshida, followed by Jonathan Cole.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much for taking my, my call. My name is David Yoshida. We have lived here in West Menlo Park since 1975 and we've really enjoyed the city, obviously. My line of work, I investigate and reconstruct car accidents. So I've investigated and reconstructed over 6,000 accidents in the last 50 years. So I'm very sensitive to traffic issues, especially Middle Avenue. My wife and I play pickleball. And we thank the city for striking Court Five at Nealon Park. Since last August 2021, my wife and I have made daily trips, almost daily trips to Nealon Park every morning and understand the, the traffic issues and the bicycle issues in that neighborhood. I also was at Nealon Park during the construction and reconstruction of the sidewalks next to the park. When that was occurring, obviously there's no parking on Middle next to the park. And parking got very congested within Nealon Park. People that were going to the, the, the kids playground, the ones that were using Little House were double parking and parking in the dirt, parking wherever they could find parking. Fortunately, none of the cars in the dirt were being sighted. But want to emphasize that removing parking, especially near the park, can be problematic. So I, I'm in favor of maintaining the, the current parking in, in front of Nealon Park. And I certainly appreciate homeowners who need curbside parking for various reasons. So I would appreciate the, the, the use of, of, of parking for cars along Middle for the benefit of the homeowners. Thank you very much for taking my call.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jonathan Cole, followed by Jackie Sebrian. And this will also be the final call for public comment on item I, one.
Hi, neighbors. And thank you, City Council, for the chance to participate tonight. I am the parent of two Oakdale students. I am a cyclist, bike commuter myself. I commute to Stanford. I commute a lot of different places before I had children and now with them. I organized a, a letter to City Council that I, I hope most of you had a chance to read after talking with Oakdale parents over the past few weeks. And I will say personally and generally, I am the type of person that would be supportive of dedicated, fully protected bike lanes. And I still am for the course of this discussion. I sat back and listened tonight. And I think I've heard a lot of good thoughts, recommendations, concerns from our neighbors. Accommodating those, I think when we ride to school in the morning, I think the biggest challenge with young children is the fact that the parking overnight is largely underutilized. I think that you have to look at where it is utilized. I like the idea of David, David Hirsch's pilot concept to understand where the impact of parking would be the greatest on residents. In the letter that I sent to City Council, I intentionally let the, let the, left the recommendations vague because I knew we'd have a wide range of folks that would respond. And there were a number of our, our school parents or fellow school parents and friends of mine who had concerns about removable parking on both sides. And I totally understand that. So I think pilots are a great way to do that. I think for, for kids, the biggest challenge is can we consolidate the parking, right? When there's a car every hundred yards and the glut of students has to move around a car, that creates a very harrowing and dangerous situation. I think if we really had to do that once or twice, or, you know, once a block, I think that would make it safer. And then the last thing, again, after hearing the comments from, from our neighbors on, on the call tonight. You know, the school bell is quite the consolidator of bike traffic. So in the morning, as everyone's headed, let's call it westward on the north, on the north side of Middle, that, that bicycle traffic is higher. So it would probably make sense to remove the parking on that side. And then when everyone's kind of lazily coming back home in the afternoon, have some cars to navigate on the south side on the way back home. So those are my thoughts. I really appreciate all of the feedback tonight. I've learned something. I hope we all have. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Jackie Sebrian, followed by an in-person speaker.
Hi, City Councilmembers and staff. Thank you so much for that great report. Like I appreciate how all the feedback was woven in. I would like to, first off, encourage the 25 mile an hour speed limit. I understand the issues with it, but frankly, like it will give cover to all those brave folks trying to slow traffic down by just driving slower. And for my also peace of mind, it will eliminate that oxymoron of seeing a school bike safety route sign along with a 30 mile an hour speed limit sign. I happen to live in a whole neighborhood where curb parking is prohibited in front of all the houses. And I'm just going to say, like, we bought the house that way. So I never had street parking to be sad about giving up. But we're a thriving neighborhood and it works out. And as I use Middle Avenue to commute every single morning of school, I watch six to 10-year-olds, to the previous speaker, I watch them weave in and out of traffic, going around parked cars every single morning. I also watch cars drive into the bike lane to get around left turners. Like I think I fully support eliminating parking on at least one side of the street. But I hear the concerns about parking and I think it came up at Complete Streets meeting. Like I, I, I do understand the concerns, but I think that the safety of all of the users of the street is more important than everyone having parking in front of their house. So thank you so much for all of your time and all of the work and all of the outreach. And I am excited to see what we have on the other side of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So I'll go to our in-person speaker, followed by Katie Beruzzi. And for in-person, if you can state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Sally Cole and I am the Chair of the Complete Streets Commission. The commission, I want to speak on behalf of them for a moment to say how excited everyone really was with the public input on this process. And I want to thank the staff for managing it so well. But I also want to thank every member of the public who's written and spoken up and showed up in the rain and everything else because your input really greatly contributed to this process of the recommendations. And it's really how it should be working together to do something great for Menlo Park. I had two points I wanted to make. The first is that as we've gone through the recommendations over the months, it's really dawned on me that Middle Avenue is a very complex street. And because of that, I'd like to stress my personal opinion that I think we should really prioritize ease of use and ease of navigation as we consider the different proposals for the redesign. In my opinion, especially because there are kids with elementary school age where it's sort of power users of the street. It's really up to us to make it super straightforward and easy to do the safest thing when you're on this street. For that reason, I would personally advocate for parking removal on both sides. I've been up and down the street, walking, biking, driving so much in the past few months to really I've been up and down the street, walking, biking, driving so much in the past few months to really think about this and consider it. And I have a few reasons to make, to have that opinion. First of all, as we know, we do describe it as a school safety route and kids are using it every day. But with kids, we know they bike to school, we know they bike home. And it's never really landed right with me or made sense to me to make the street safer on one side only. The other thing here is that we, oh yes, we are at a moment in time where I think it's really important to think about what Middle Avenue is going to become, not just the way it is now. And with the vast expected increase of through traffic and bicyclists with the advent of the underpass crossing and five hundred El Camino, it's going to really be a lot of different demands on the street. It's really going to go up. So I don't think we will ever regret going with the safest option for Middle Avenue at this time. I think it will pay back in many, many ways in the future. Finally, and I say this with all due respect to the residents of the street. Having been on the street so much lately, I haven't really seen a demand for parking on both sides at all times. The street seems to, the parking seems to be quite minimal on the street. If I saw car to car parking at all times, I would be recommending something different. It would be a completely different matter to me. But I haven't seen that. Lastly, my second point is just to say that I want to share my personal experience of living on a street in Menlo Park that is a lot like middle. I moved to Menlo Park ten years ago and some of you will remember I was advocating for not removing street parking in front of my house at that time. But I realize now that we did remove street parking and install sidewalks, that the street is really what it was meant to be. It's so much safer, so many more people are enjoying it. It's a balance. It always is. But the inconvenience that it was to me to not have street parking has proven to be manageable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Katie Beruzzi, followed by Carmen Visser.
Hi, this is Katie Beruzzi from the Complete Streets Commission, speaking for myself. I'm so happy that Sally Cole made the point that I was about to make about us planning for the street we're going to have, not the one we have now. So I'll give an example. The four-way stop sign at San Mateo Avenue, which I know has caused some consternation. I don't necessarily see that as a useful traffic calming device, but I would encourage council to consider the likely movements of future bike commuters between the new Stanford housing on El Camino Real and the bike bridge at the end of San Mateo. And the left turning movements that people are going to be making. So those are much, these are going to be safer if you have a stop sign, a four-way stop sign. So that's one reason why I imagine staff might be recommending that. Because they don't usually recommend stop signs for traffic calming. I want to second other people who have suggested that you pilot things because we don't know exactly what it's going to look and feel like. But we know that the street is likely to change. And I think in general, we should be embracing more pilots as a city. And I actually am a big fan of the idea of the piloting of a, of a roundabout at that university middle intersection. It actually sees a high amount of traffic conflict. There are a lot of accidents there. And this is something that has worked well on Stanford campus at four-way stops. And I just, I think this is maybe worth a go. But if I'm in the minority, I'll accept that. The other thing I wanted to do was thank staff for the extreme effort they went to in collecting survey research. I think they had over six hundred respondents. I had to go back and look in my Complete Streets report, but it looked like over sixty of the people that responded to the survey were actually people who live on Middle Avenue. And the majority of people who live on Middle Avenue who responded to the survey, similar to the majority of people who responded overall, were supportive of removing parking on at least one side of the street, if not both. So I, I hear people saying, I didn't know about this. I, I'm not comfortable with it. I think my neighbors aren't comfortable with it. I get that. That's good. That's anecdotal evidence that council shouldn't ignore. But it also looks like there were other people who did take the survey and did understand what was on the table. I think staff did a really great job of kind of doing their homework here. So I hope that you'll take that into account. So often we feel like staff haven't maybe done enough outreach. Today, that doesn't seem to be the case. So thank you so much for considering these changes. And yes, please, put a sidewalk in the long-term plan for the street, even if we don't get it right away. I see so many pedestrians using the street as well as cyclists and drivers. And I think our dream for the city is for everybody to have their place so that we can all fairly and equitably access our public right away and get where we need to go. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Carmen Visser, followed by Scott Salties.
Hi, this is Brendan Visser. I'm here with my wife Carmen. We are residents on middle, have been here for more than a decade. So obviously the removal of parking on both sides would affect us directly. We, however, really having a child who goes to Oaknoll and another child who goes to Hillview, are supportive of moving, removing parking on, on both sides and all of the traffic calming measures because we really want to prioritize safety over all else. This includes the stop sign at San Mateo, the reduced speed limit. And again, I cannot overemphasize removing parking on both sides. And some have suggested that residents on middle are going to be inconvenienced, and there is that element for us. But we would very much rather prioritize safety over that small inconvenience that we would suffer. I imagine that many of these same discussion points, of course, were brought up in the discussion of Santa Cruz Ave. When that went to, when parking's removed. Santa Cruz Ave has a church, a school, at, at the park, has all of those same features and yet parking was removed. The sky didn't fall. The, all, the, the, you know, and I think the vast majority of people there, as far as I can understand, I know having many friends on that street. In fact, believe that the street has become much more usable and is much more pleasant and is really enjoyed to a greater degree by the community and the safety has improved. So especially in anticipation of the increase in traffic and the increase of bike schools that are going to be coming around this corner of San Mateo and middle. We really think that we need to, in anticipation of that, prioritize safety and remove parking on both sides. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Scott Salties, followed by Matthew. Scott, it looks like you are unmuted, but we're still unable to hear you. You may want to check the device. Oh, perfect. There we go.
Yeah, thank you. I'm here with my wife Clara Choi. And we live at seven forty-three Middle Avenue. I bike to work every day, so I appreciate the complexities of the traffic issues. I'll be brief. I fully support the closure of Lake Street, which is nearby our home. I find that it frequently, people will cut through that street as a cut through for drivers trying to avoid the traffic lights at Middle Avenue. Frequently, these are commercial like taxi cabs and other drivers. So I support the closure of Lake Street. Certainly support a sidewalk along both sides as a long-term goal. And as well as supporting all the speed debate measures as discussed. My main comment is that as of this time, I support having the parking removed from one side of the street, but not two. I think there are complexities to this issue, which we may not appreciate, especially in the setting of the new Stanford buildings on the other side of El Camino. And perhaps the best option for it is a trial period, a pilot, to gather more data on what will constitute safety, a balance with the increased traffic that we will see. Thank you. I'll stop there.
Thank you for your comment. So our final speaker is Matthew. And Matthew, I'll ask that you state your last name for the record.
This is Matthew Raskoff. I live at University. And I'm here with my son Jasper Raskoff, who we're keeping up past his bedtime, so we can make a comment in the City Council meeting tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I did make a comment at the previous meeting and won't reiterate, reiterate what I said previously. I also sent a message to the City Council email list. But I, I am a member of the Oaknoll Bicycle Safety Committee. My son is a student at Oaknoll. I'm also an administrator at Stanford, but I'm speaking in a personal capacity tonight in support of the removal of parking on both sides of middle, as well as all of the other traffic calming measures that are contemplated in the report. For us, as Brendan Visser said, safety really needs to be prized above all else, all, all the other values here. And the, the, you know, inconvenience, I think, is really incommensurate with the consideration of hundreds of students who ride their bicycles on middle to Hillview and to Oaknoll every single day. This is the only possible, you know, significant improvement that we have seen in Menlo Park after years and years of talking about this. In my previous comment in the previous meeting, I, I made the case for a protected bike lane. I understand there are some considerations about the number of driveways that front onto middle and the limitations of building a protected bike lane. So I, I would say if the best we could do is to remove parking on both sides in the section of middle between university and Olive, we should do that for now. Absolutely, we are in support of the protected bike lane in the section between El Camino and university. And I hope we can consider piloting some protected bike lanes in that, that, that extended section between university and Olive. If in the areas where there are too many driveways, it's impossible, so be it. But armadillos and ballards can be installed at very low cost. You can pilot with, you know, such inexpensive, you know, objects as, as planters that would increase the safety of the road greatly for all the users of it. The research shows that protected bike lanes are actually the only significant safety improvements. And painted bike lanes can easily be violated. In fact, the staff report says, expresses a concern about illegal parking by delivery drivers who might just ignore the bike lanes entirely, forcing these young users of the road, these young cyclists into the, the traffic. And I think that is legitimate concern, but that's not an argument for giving up. To me, that's an argument for a more significant physical barrier that separates these bike lanes from the thirty mile per hour traffic on the road. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And thank you for considering this issue. And I hope Menlo Park can get its first protected bike lane in the entire city as a result of your actions tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands, no one else stepping up to the podium in person. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the many people who spoke tonight and the many people who've written in and come to other meetings. It is so important to get this public input. And I have been asked to have a short bio break. We will resume, let's take a ten minute, actually twelve minute, let's resume at eight fifteen, please.
Having our city council return to our in-person and virtual days, Mayor Nash, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you very much. So we are now open for a city council discussion. Is there someone who would like to start us off? Actually, first of all, could we put up the, what you are looking for so we can? Thank you so much. All right, so does anyone want to start off with just general comments? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nash. And so I just want to understand that the, the staff recommendation is true parking on one side of the road, not, not both sides, correct?
Yeah, so, so the recommendation that we got from Complete Streets was, I would say, remove it definitely from one side and from the other side to the extent that, that staff thought feasible and practical, recognizing that there were some other needs. So the resolution, the way it's written has essentially all on one side and about 24 spaces on the other is the way the draft resolution is. So it's mostly one side.
And so for the places where parking wasn't removed, can you explain to me a little bit of that rationale on the side where it's not, not completely removed?
Sure. Yeah, no, happy to do that, Councilmember Combs. So the, maybe it might be easier to explain where it was removed on the other side. So it's generally in areas where, so where we have some of the raised crossings and the other kinds of things like that to avoid, you know, for sightline issues that, you know, at intersections generally. And there are a number of places there where there's already parking. And then where there were not residences, so generally in front of Wild Park and the new community church were the other places that we see a potential opportunity if you're mostly just removing it from one side, but there's not sort of that residential use. Now, since that time, just, I will acknowledge what we did hear from the church, a desire to retain some of that parking as well.
Okay. And so making sure I understand that the staff recommendation for the site where it's not a complete removal essentially retains it and, and where it, the frontage is, is a residence or where, in, in most cases, I know that may not be precise.
That's, but yeah, it's a good summation. Thank you.
Okay. And then a question, what was the nature of, of our outreach as it relates specifically to residents on Middle Avenue? Like, did we, I know there is the postcard, I know there's the online survey. Did we do, like, go door to door? Was that, that thought about? I mean, I don't know exactly the number of, of homes there, but it's not a voluminous number, especially anyone who's done canvassing as part of a campaign. I personally have knocked on thousands of doors in Menlo Park and I know there's not thousands of doors on Middle Avenue. So, so did we consider, consider that to, to, to make sure? Because again, I, I, I'll, actually, I'll let you answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, the, the simple answer is no, we did not go door to door as staff and, and try to talk to every single resident at this, at this, through this process.
Okay, do, do we know, has there ever been a process to either you or the city manager where we have gone door to door for, for traffic impacts?
I can't say off the top of my head, but that's, I'm not familiar with every single outreach effort, so. But there, there may be, but I don't.
You don't recall off the top of your, I'm not, not asking you to.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Totally fair. All right, th- those are all my questions for you.
Well, I will step up next then and just give some of my thoughts. And that's, first of all, I am, I think it's a very complex street. It's a very complex situation where we've got many different constituencies and just interest in the street. I think that the street is, as this, as Middle Avenue comes on, Middle Plaza comes on line and as we get the undercrossing, we are going to see more and more traffic on the street. Hopefully that will be a strong number of new bicycle users and new pedestrians. We're trying to encourage people walking and biking in the city. So I am very strongly looking at safety as this, at, as we go forward. The first thing I would like to say is I, I would like to see the street reduced to 25 miles per hour. Have the city council make that as a resolution in the future. I think that traffic calming is a good way to go, but we could do something immediately with a city council resolution as has been done on other streets. And I see no reason to wait for traffic calming measures. So I would like to propose that first of all, we, as we go through this, we consider coming back as quickly as possible with a resolution to reduce the speed on all of this Middle Avenue to 25 miles per hour. And I would also, I am in favor of piloting, doing whatever we can to pilot all of these different measures. I think that that's something that will give us a chance to see how it works. And so I am in favor of, well, I will just, I am in favor of trying to remove parking on both sides of the street. I realize that it is something which is going to be a challenge for some people. I have, I have lived through it on Santa Cruz Avenue where I initially was not for removing the parking and after it has been removed, as Complete Streets Commissioner Sally Cole, one of my neighbors said, it is something that has been very workable. One learns to know your neighbors. We share our neighbor, our driveways. We do park around the corner as necessary, but most of the time it works really, really smoothly. And the benefits of having the parking removed have been tremendous. First of all, there is so much more activity on the street. Many more people are biking, many more people are walking. It is just added tremendously to, to the availability of safe, comfortable walking and biking. We see many more students walking and biking. It is still something where there's, one has to be careful of the cars. Whatever we can do to reduce the speeds is good. We currently have a 25 mile per hour speed limit on Santa Cruz Avenue. And whatever we can do to maintain that is great. I personally would love to see more traffic enforcement, as many other people say, and I would like to see the same option on Middle Avenue. It also is something where personally it is much easier going in and out of the driveway without having cars parked and with, one doesn't have to worry about the kids coming around a parked car or being able to see the car that's, that you, that you weren't able to see as you're pulling out, all of a sudden a car is there because it was previously blocked by a truck or another vehicle. It's just been a tremendous benefit both as, for drivers, I believe, and for walking and biking. I do believe that that's something that has to be carefully piloted and we need to have some, try it, make sure that there's no unintended consequences. We do need to make sure that it works for the church. There is a possibility that there's, we do something on Sundays. I think that staff can, I'd like staff to continue to look at that. I think that a four-way stop at San Mateo Drive is something that will add to slowing down traffic and the safety of all users. I think perhaps putting, maybe we could put a local sign or local traffic only signs so that maybe minimize any cut through traffic. That way, do whatever we can. And I'm very much in favor of looking, of keeping, looking at data and seeing if we do, what are the consequences of this? And the roundabout at Middle Avenue, I think, is, yes, thank you. It's on my list. Anyway, I would like to also pilot the roundabout at Middle Avenue. I think that the current four-way stop at Middle Avenue is just very prone to just people ignoring it, people rolling through. I ride it regularly on my bike, I walk it regularly and I drive it regularly. And it is a very uncomfortable intersection. I think that a roundabout is an interesting way to solve it. I, I used to live in Cambridge, Massachusetts and roundabouts were terrific there. They do take some getting used to. But I'm curious to see that. So I guess overall, 25 miles per hour speed limit as soon as possible. Have the four-way stop at San Mateo Drive. The roundabout at University and Middle and remove, try removing parking on both sides of the street. And all of this very strongly as a trial with strong, with a set timeline and a robust process for input. So I will stop there. Oh, and I, I actually, one more piece. And that's, I think there is a great need for a sidewalk on both sides and, but I would like to see that go into the CIP. And also, as we get closer to doing that, we need to really take a look at the design issues and what are the impacts for local residents and heritage trees, which on Santa Cruz Avenue, we were, we were able to work around those. And I'm hoping that there will be some that will be able to do that on Santa Cruzes, I mean, on Middle Avenue as well. Councilmember Combs.
I'm, I'm happy to go. First of all, definitely, thank you to, to staff and for, for the presentation and all of the work and for the Complete Streets Commission. It, it was clear that there's been a lot of thought and a lot of engagement and we threw, like, everything out there, like raised sidewalks, speed humps, speed feedback signs, new stop signs. I mean, we, we, we're seeming to be doing it all. And, and I think that that's, that's generally a, a, a good, a good thing. I would say on the, the 25 miles an hour, just because the mayor recently brought it up, totally supportive, as the city manager knows, there is another sheet, what I'd like, I'd like to throw into there if, if we are, if we are getting to a resolution on that. Really supportive. I, I like the idea of the roundabout. And I, I just don't know if, if it's just too high-profile an intersection to do it. Again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I'm just saying, I think I probably like the idea more than the actual implementation. And it's because I, I think that it is just a, a lot to get used to, even at Linfield, right? Is that, is that where we have it? Like, and I'm, you, you know, travel that like every, every day, dropping off my kid. And I feel that there are people still don't quite know what, what to do with it. And so, again, that, that, that's my concern. Again, not that I'm in opposition to it, but, but just, just my concern. And so, but obviously, wha- what is, is key here is the issue of, of removing parking. And so on that, I just like to say, I've been pretty consistent in my timeline council. I think like every time we've had the option of removing parking, I have said no. I, was it Constitution or Commonwealth? I remember that one. I, I was, I was, I was a no, because I parked every once in a while where we were removing parking and saw the value of it. And on El Camino, I, I was, I was, I was a no. Here, I'm, I'm moving, I'm not a complete no. I, I would be supportive of, of removing one side, but, but I do think that, again, it is a, it's a major change in people's lives to not have on-street parking in front of your home. And, and I do think, and I appreciate that maybe we just follow the pattern of past engagement, but in a situation like this, I would have liked to have seen a scenario where, if not staff, if we, we hired a, a firm to go and actually knock on every door. We, we do that when we're asking for people's votes. We don't just send a postcard. We don't just say show up at a, at a house party. We actually go and spend hours knocking on doors. And, and I don't think that, I, I think in a scenario like this where you're actually changing how people use their, their, their home and their neighborhood is even more impactful than a vote and so who you're going to vote for. And, and so in that sense, it's, it's hard for me to, to say that, like, we've done everything we can do in reaching out to, to residents specifically on, on Meadow. Because again, I appreciate the larger community value of it, but, but there, the, the residents on that street, their lives will change. And, and I want to make sure that there is someone who, at least from the city, or someone hired from the city at some point knocked on someone's door and said, hey, this is coming. And I, I don't think, again, like, like I said, that that's much to ask, given that, that we're talking about, like, in the dozens. And I don't think, again, like, like I said, that that's much to ask, given that, that we're talking about like in the dozens. And not, not the thousands, but. All that being said, like I said, I could be supportive of, of removing parking from, from essentially one side of the street. I think I could be supportive of what the staff recommendation is. On this. The stop sign. I feel that like I always, people say that like, oh, the stop signs don't do what they're supposed to do and people blow through them. But generally, I've been supportive of, of, of stop signs. As traffic coming, even though I know that, that some of the data doesn't quite present them as that way. And I'm, I'm also supportive of, of the closure at, at Blake and Meadow. It seems that there is, there is some widespread community support. For that, for that change. And so. Am I missing anything, Mr. Louch, as far as, as far as direction of? Those are, those are my thoughts.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and thank you to staff, to Mr. Louch, Ms. Magaya. Mr. Chen and Ms. Jung for all of their work. I was there with many of you on that rainy day and I. I think the outreach has been phenomenal. It's been really years. And. I think it's exciting that we've made it to this point. Given that I have put a lot of thought into Middle Avenue, probably more thought than I've put a lot of things in. Reading all the comments, watching Complete Streets Commission meetings. Looking at Google Street View history to see what the parked cars over time have looked like. I spent a lot of the last two days biking around both on Meadow and all over on Oak Grove to look at the examples that Mr. Louch. Showed us and I wanted to share some observations that, that have come to me. So if you can bear with me with these. As, as you know, Mayor Nash stated, we have Middle Plaza opening, we have the tunnel, God willing, that will open. SRI and their proposal is looking at improving bicycle connectivity to Middlefield. So there's a lot more usage coming to middle and being out on middle, cars are going really fast. So that's another observation. I also, as I mentioned from Google Street View, noticed that there are, are few parked cars and they're few and far between. That I know folks have commented on. And so if you're a skilled cyclist and you see parked cars. You go really far out, you kind of take the lane to avoid the door zone. More younger or unskilled cyclists might be nervous about the traffic and so stay hugged to the car. And that's something I also witnessed a lot over the last couple of days biking around. I also was biking a lot in Palo Alto and seeing their, their infrastructure and I saw a couple DoorDash delivery drivers. Land and open their doors and I saw it in different places. I saw it where there was parking and a bike lane. And that unpredictability of the, the car door swinging open. And then I saw it where there was no parking and the DoorDash driver pulled it into the bike lane. And the door opens up, but what I noticed is the difference is if there is a parking. The cyclist doesn't know which car is going to be the DoorDash driver. And so again, the skilled cyclist might assume any car could end up being that DoorDash driver and move over. But the less experienced cyclist might not. But when you see a car, a delivery car or the DoorDash driver pull over in a bike lane kind of illegally. The cyclist gets a real strong cue. Notice that something is amiss because there are no cars pulled over. And so the cyclist, whether they're skilled or not, is inclined to give a lot more room because it's an unusual sight. So that was something I observed. I observed that people are social when they're riding their bikes a lot of the time and they tend to ride. Side by side or in groups. I also noticed a huge influx in e-bikes and scooters. And bikes traveling at different speeds and needing to pass one another. I also did some research on dooring and for those of you who are not as familiar with cycling, it's the. When a car door suddenly opens up into a cyclist and the, from what I read. Different cities had different data, but it looks like about 10 to 20%, depending on where of bicycle car collisions are caused by dooring. And so kind of putting, putting all this together, putting together kind of the inconvenience. To the homeowners, as has been mentioned, which I think some have framed it as a hardship. Whether it's a hardship or an inconvenience, I know that that's a real thing. And it's, it's nice to hear from Ms. Cole and Mayor Nash about their experiences on Santa Cruz Avenue and what that has been like for them. But at the end of the day, the street is a public right of way for the usage of all. I do think that the Middle Avenue residents have been listened to and it's hard. When folks speak and they're listened to and then what they want isn't done exactly as they want it. That doesn't mean they haven't been heard or listened to, but there's a lot of different stakeholders and considerations to be made. So first I was actually, I've been really struggling the last few days. I know I kind of got into city council from a Safe Routes to School background. So you might have thought I was immediately gravitating towards removing parking on both sides, but. I was really trying to think about the buffers and the width, because if you're thinking, wow, a five foot bike lane with a two foot buffer, that sounds really generous. And then, like I said, I went out and actually took some pictures and I sent them to Ms. Heron. And Ms. Heron, can you? Put the pictures I took up on the screen. So the first thing I took pictures of was side by side riding and this was all yesterday. Next slide, please. So this was in the morning. These are kids going to Hillview. The picture on the left is on Oak Grove, heading towards Laurel from Middlefield. And these are two kids riding side by side. The one on the right are two kids also on Oak Grove. This is closer to the post office. And so you can see kind of the distance that different groups of kids are riding side by side. Next slide, please. I think this is a mom and a kid and this is on Middle Avenue and kind of the distance that they're keeping from one another. And another thing I noticed that, and we're going to get to this point in just a second with the door zone. Is that it's the two next to each other that I think are more concerning than the large packs of kids. I think a lot of us see large groups of kids riding around and when like 10 kids are riding together, it kind of causes a ruckus. And I think it draws attention and it's, it's safer in a way. It's when these more quieter. Two friends riding together that can be problematic. So now remember how the distance that those, these two by twos were traveling and then the next slide, please, Ms. Heron? Okay, so now, next slide, please. So these are pictures on Oak Grove. So on the left, I believe Mr. Louch showed a similar picture. This is by Coffee Bar and. This is just a car showing these awesome door zone markings. And from what I understand from Mr. Louch, these are comparable to what the Middle Avenue five foot lane with the two foot buffer would be like. Then the slide on the right, this is after passing 711 on Oak Grove. And you can see that the, the bike in front of me instinctively, once that man in the white van made himself apparent. Went around pretty wide. And then the next slide, please. So this is the white van with the door opening wider. This is actually the same shot, just one zoomed in. And when I ride by myself on Oak Grove, I tend to ride on that T, that sideways T on the left. That line is where I place my bike. That way I'm avoiding the door zone and I'm not too close to the oncoming traffic. The problem becomes with this five foot bike lane and two foot buffer. Is going back to the human behavior we witnessed in the earlier slides of the friends going side by side. So if this is the design on Middle Avenue, I'm very concerned that. Human behavior, especially with our younger riders, with their parents or with their friends. Are going to be side by side riding and we can tell them to ride single file, whatever, even. Also going back to my comment about the e-bikes and there being different speeds and people passing each other. So I don't see how the side by side riding avoids both the door zone and the, the traffic. In this school safety zone that, that we're establishing. So I think that the staff report, the information item that we had from the last meeting. Talked about the danger of the door zone as a potential negative of the retaining parking on one side. I also think that the data from the survey. Saying what the 60 people that answered the survey on Middle Avenue thought about. Retaining parking on one side versus two sides and certainly the larger population in favor. Of removing the parking on both sides. Given all of this and the fact that at the end of the day, we want to make our. Bike infrastructure such that mistakes aren't fatal and we don't. Create situations where we're putting people at an, at an unnecessary risk. In the name of conveniencing some, some folks that do have alternatives. Yes, not as convenient as what they have right now. But I, I am agreeing that with Mayor Nash to, that I believe we should remove parking on both sides. I agree it should be a pilot. There should be opportunities for observation and measurement of what's going on on the side streets. The people living on middle, if it's really going from an inconvenience to a hardship can let that be known. I'd like to see the speeds on middle because I have heard a concern that kind of the open lane of not having parked cars there. Give a perception that it's like a speedway. So I think if we get some speed data on that, there's that also a concern about passing on the right. Collecting that data, but I think there's other ways to calm other than having parked cars. And I'm really proud of the suggestions that staff has put forward to really calm middle. I'm completely in support of the 25 mile an hour. I don't know if Councilmember Combs was referring to Bay Road as one of the other. Locations that he would be interested in the 25 mile an hour. Limit, but there and certainly Santa Cruz Avenue by the cemetery. As well, so if we're, if we're doing a resolution, can throw in a couple of spots. I had even pushed to put Middle, Santa Cruz Avenue by the cemetery and Bay Road on there. I'm always in support of bike safety classes, enforcement, all these other things, but I think that. We, we, we hear a lot from parents saying, what are you doing to keep my kids safe? And this is a real opportunity to do everything we can. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I think that that was really helpful to see the pictures and some of the explanation, which also definitely goes into. The decision-making. In addition, I want to add that. Garbage cans are a huge issue with narrower bike lanes. Because people do put garbage cans out once a week and they are not always picked up promptly. Or they'll be, they'll get a skew as they're, they are picked up, but when they're put back down. So those are weekly impediments to bikes and even in our five foot lanes on. Santa Cruz Avenue, kids are constantly once a week having to go around them and that really creates a problem. And one of the other issues is just. As much as. We may want to train around it, there's, people are distracted, both you see people biking all the time, kids and adults who are on their phones. Or talking to their friends next to them, but there's a lot of distracted, both bicyclists, pedestrians and obviously cars. So again, I think it really is beneficial to have a larger. Bicycle zone and with the buffer. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I realize I forgot a few staff direction questions. I am support of Blake Street closure. I'm support of the stop sign. Actually, I was standing out at that location. Four women who were out for their morning coffee were having a hard time crossing middle. And I said, what would you think of a four-way stop sign? And they were like, yeah. And then a cyclist was coming over from Palo Alto and I was like, what would you think of a? What four-leg stop sign? And she's like, that would be better. So I, as I know, it's very anecdotal, but I, I, I see the challenge crossing middle. The frontage and I'm not in support of the bidirectional cycle track. I want bike lanes on where they kind of naturally are expected. The frontage parking in front of Neelin, which would be parallel. I believe some of it has to be handicapped, which makes perfect sense. I think some of it should be loading zone. Because I know people drop off their kids for tennis and different activities there. The roundabout, that's the one thing I'm really kind of struggling with. I'm, I still kind of need to be convinced, but I, that's the one thing I'm convincing me about the track about. Thanks.
Councilmember Mueller, would you like to?
Could we hear from Councilmember Taylor first?
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Can staff put the slide back up? As far as direction from the council. Thank you. I am in support of the traffic calming. And also having a pilot for parking removal on both sides. Also in support of adding the sidewalks to the, or discussion about adding the sidewalks. We discuss priorities next year. I am also in support of the temporary closure of Blake Street at Meadow. And as far as the, the closure of the Shell gas station driveway. At this time, I don't have any thoughts on that. And were there any other items that staff wanted us to? Give direction on that I did not cover?
With apologies, this is Hugh. I think we did leave the roundabout off the list, so yes, certainly appreciate feedback on the roundabout.
Okay, on, on the roundabout. I am curious about it. I'm actually was interested in it, but it doesn't sound like it has the majority support from the council. I think it has been at least beneficial on one of the streets that I drive on in the city in a different area. It definitely slows me down and I'm assuming slows others' drivers down, so I don't want to totally eliminate it as an option. And that's my feedback.
Mr. Louch, would it be possible to have like? A weekend of trial of the roundabout so we could. See how it works, realizing that people need time to. Experience it and get it right with.
Yeah, thanks for that. So we haven't thought through what the design of the pilot would necessarily look like. I would be a little concerned about just a weekend, only because for the reasons you just suggested. Which is that I think if we want people to get used to it. And, and I think very much, we had, like I said, we had a very robust conversation with Complete Streets. I think. If we were to do something like this, we would want to do it in a way where we have really great notifications for people. Literally on the street, you know, plus social media and regular kinds of media, postcards, whatever it is, right? So we need to like scope all that out and think through what that looks like. And have, you know, some monitoring, especially at first, you know, so we need to work with PD to figure out what sort of resources were available there. So there's a lot that would go into that. And I think the way it kind of emerged and the way that it's written in the staff report is sort of recognizing that. It's, it's a larger lift. And so if we were to pursue that. You know, we'd want probably to scope that out and make sure we had a very clear understanding of sort of the level of effort that was required for that before advancing.
Thank you. Is, yes, I think that that's a really. Challenging area. I, I will say, I was surprised to see it proposed, but given that it was proposed, my experience had been positive. But I think that it's definitely something we would want to. Spend a lot of time working and designing. Councilmember Mueller. spend a lot of time working and designing. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so this is something that I've been working on. So this really originated out of residents for me on the street who were looking to make safety improvements to the street because of the speed and the fact that there were accidents actually occurring. Occurring and because of cars flying down the street too quickly. As we started to look at that, that got put into the Complete Streets plan and the idea that we wanted to add improve the bike lanes and bring it toward as they attend, as they move toward the the under the the underpass that someday will come at height at the train intersection of train under crossing. But what I'm trying to, what I'm struggling with is that what I'm struggling with right now is that despite all of our feedback, I just go back to how much work we put in with residents on Santa Cruz Avenue to which are here in the room. When we did it, we put in a lot of work to get people where they were. And the idea to close to to get rid of parking on both sides of the street was actually that came out, came up through residents and came from them as opposed to something that was we we put onto them. And so I'm, you know, our council majority wants to go ahead and closure on both sides. As we discussed that in a pilot, what is important to me is how long is the pilot? And then at the end of the pilot, how is the data collected? And so what I really want to have happen in that is that I want the same level of engagement that we had with residents on Santa Cruz Avenue. And so and that was in a lot of meetings and a lot of living rooms with people here. There's a lot of meetings with people in garages. They knew it was coming, what was happening and everyone was super engaged. And so I think what I'd like to see is that at the end of that pilot, that postcards be sent to every resident on the street to collect their feedback. To so I I want to actually collect the feedback from the residents on the street and that that come to the council when a certain percentage of postcards have returned. So we know, because I want to know, because basically we need to know if there's someone who has access and functional needs, this is causing a major problem for. We want to know if there's, you know, what the issues are on Sunday with the church. We want to know. I want to find. I really want to understand all those details, especially because what came to us from the what came tonight to us from a Complete Streets Commission was a recommendation for one side. So if we're going to do two on a pilot, I really want to go ahead and be able to collect all of that data at the end of that pilot and know how long that and I think we owe to people to tell them how long that pilot's going to last. And so my look at my I look at our professional staff and say, how long is an appropriate pilot?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. So one comparison point that we did do in the city was Oak Grove bike. So that pilot was a year and then was made permanent. And there was quite a bit of data collection during that pilot. Now, that was a different pilot because we weren't removing parking from both sides, obviously. For this case, what I would say is that really, we want like multiple seasons worth of data to to collect on it. So we're not just collecting one point in time and then that's it. So I would say a minimum of six months for a pilot and depending when that starts. And then I think depending on the level of engagement and effort that is imagined by the council, we would need to do some work to kind of scope what that looks like. There's certainly a great, I think they'll grow example does provide a great foundation in terms of data collection that we can do with, you know, kind of hard data, if you will. You know, so like bike counts and vehicle counts and speeds and parking and how it's impacting side streets and stuff like that. So we have a really good resource, I think, to use to sort of scope that out, but we would need to spend some time scoping that out. And then engagement on top of that would be, you know, we'd have to think through what the level of effort would be required to do that, you know, with all the other priorities that that we have.
So to my colleagues who are saying they want to move forward with the pilot tonight, is it your intention tonight that we pass it with the pilot but not know the details of the pilot? Or is this going to come back to us for adoption once we know what the details of the pilot are?
Actually, let me hold a good question. Let me hold that for a second. Two things. One is we need to hear from the Complete Streets Chair as far as what exactly was recommended. And the other thing is I do want to remind you that the council actually for Santa Cruz Avenue gave residents a choice of losing of basically if we wanted parking, it was going to be in the frontage on our property. And so our choice was instead of losing the right of way on our property and basically landscaping on our property, we chose to remove the parking on the street. And it has worked out extremely well, but it was not a it was a between a rock and a hard place.
I was in all those negotiations and I was fighting, but I remember I was trying, was working on.
Right. I know. That's how we first met. But it was something where it was not that there was a a groundswell of residents saying, please take our parking away.
No, no.
But it has, it has worked out very well.
Right. No, and I was were trying to find the compromise with you all at that time. The the thing, though, that I'd say, the thing that's so again, thinking of the residents here, so question, I think you need, what I'm trying to figure out is, and I already know, I don't need to, I understand what's in the staff report. I understand that also that commissioners voiced in the then thing, they thought council wouldn't do it. So that's what they would recommend. But I still know that's what was recommended to us. And so if you're a resident and you're looking at that and you're saying, well, the council's going to go past that, I think we need to explain. And I'm I'm saying to you tonight, that's fine. Like, there's a pilot coming. But I what is, how much are we going to know about what that pilot is tonight when we pass it so that there's because honestly, if I'm a resident and this is going as a pilot, I'm like, okay, well, I never got to comment on what the pilot is. I didn't even know what the pilot design looked like when council passed it. And so and those are things, if I were to walk you back in time, like those are things I know people in this room would have wanted to know. When, you know, because we had multiple meetings, multiple iterations of what that of what we were doing on Santa Cruz Avenue so that there was buying, that the community has much buying as possible. And so tonight we're saying, okay, even though it wasn't what was recommended in the staff report, we're going to go ahead and we're going to go two lanes in a pilot. And but we're not sure what the pilot, how long the pilot is and what the terms of the pilot are.
Well, I but I guess I do want to go to Complete Street Commissioner Chair Cole. But my understanding was that we would be receiving, that we still needed to have a design for the street. So it's not something what what I would propose is that we immediately bring back a resolution to drop the speed to twenty-five miles per hour on Middle Avenue for the entire Middle Avenue as well as any additional nearby streets, any any additional streets citywide that staff feels are similar and would also benefit from the twenty-five mile per hour reduction in speed. And then that we need to have a design, there needs to be a design stage for the removal of parking. And so, yes, it would need to, I mean, sort of taking this out of order from what I had said, but yes, I do think we do need to come back to council and review the design after we see what it is. One of the things we found in at on Santa Cruz Avenue is the street width varied quite a bit from what was what had been proposed and that it was actually much, well, let's just say, yes, there would be, it would be worthwhile to have a design state come back to council for a review before we actually go through a pilot or implement anything.
Okay, so then I'll just make it easy. So.
And I would like to hear from Complete Street Chair Cole, please.
Mayor Nash, may clarify one thing, which is that so the resolution that is there today is to remove parking on one side plus some additional spaces. So like we that would have to come back anyway. At some point, because if you were going to do the pilot, we would need to remove the parking on both sides if you, as you've described it.
Thank you. Good point. Ms. Cole.
Councilperson Mueller, I don't want to detract from your points around giving people a chance to comment on the design of the pilot, but I just wanted to say for accuracy's sake that the motion that the Complete Streets Commission passed around parking removal didn't specifically say we recommend the removal on one side only. It said, we support parking removal of some kind, but asked the staff to look into whether there were targeted places where parking should remain. So the reason I want to clarify that is that there was a discussion with the Complete Streets Commissioners where some people actively were lobbying for one side only and some others had different opinions. And so we ended up making the motion a bit more general than perhaps is coming across. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification. So then it's I'll change, I I I'll change it to that there wasn't a recommendation for both sides, it just was to remove parking. And so so I just want to make sure that we've, I just want to bring along as much of the party as we can bring along at the time we do it. And so it's clear tonight that the council is moving forward with a pilot on both sides of the street. I'd love, so it's good, that's going, that's not tonight, that vote isn't happening, but what we're saying is go ahead and design it up and also give us recommendations for the pilot. For people walking, watching at home, if you have concerns about what that pilot looks like, comment on, tell us what those concerns look like and tell us what you, how you want that input to be collected and we'll take all of that feedback. I I I did have pause tonight when the person mentioned access and functional needs and seniors. I do want to hear if there's any issues like that on the street. And I still, I know I am very curious to find out what Sundays look like with the church there. So but but we have like, to be fair, when we did the last meeting, there were people in the side streets who said, take both sides and we will take the traffic on the side streets. There was one gentleman who was very clear about that. So I guess, and so so leaving that behind, the design's going to come back for us. The pilot design, the pilot design will come back to us, all of the details of that, so we can look at that, take public feedback on that. I'm fine with traffic calming at regular intervals and not just fine with it. I'm ecstatic about it. I think it needs to happen. The I've personally seen people go way too fast on that street. And looking at the intervals, I think it's great. I really would like, as we're doing that, to really have in mind beautifying that street. I'm fine with pursuing the closure of Shell gas station driveway, but I don't think they're going to do it, but we can ask. The temporary closure of Blake Street is fine. The sidewalk on the south side, adding the five-year CIP, I confess, I like sidewalks. So yes. And then pursue a pilot mini roundabout at University Drive. I actually am open to pursuing a pilot of the roundabout. I think that we should give residents the opportunity to understand what that feels like. I think we should do it with cones because people are going to drive through it when they're on their way to Safeway in the in the middle of the, you know, middle of the night. They're not going to remember it's there. But and they're looking down at their phone. But I actually, I actually would be in support of looking at that pilot. So especially as we see a the potential for traffic at peak hours potentially increasing when the when the development opens up on El Camino, I think to have a throughput there like that with all of the traffic, with all the traffic, safety mitigations we're putting in would be could be potentially pretty wise. I'm fine with it. All I meet people on San Mateo Drive will be disappointed, but I'm happy with doing an always stop sign there. I'm fine with it being a pilot to begin with to see if it does actually increase increase people turning right onto a lay onto a layer. And so do it as a pilot, find out what happens there. And if we, whether that means take it out or whether that means put in more safety improvements, we'll have to see. But I'm fine with doing that as a pilot to start with. So at the end of the day, what I'm most excited about is that we're doing something here. Like, so do it as a pilot, but let's, let's take action for Pete's sake. It's been years. I mean, I've been on this council for ten years and for ten years, there's been talk about doing something on the street. I'm just excited to see us being unafraid to to move forward, even if it's with a pilot, to just get it done. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Mueller, for being open to pilot. I think the key word tonight is pilot. I just want to, I realized I didn't talk about Shell, totally in favor of begging them to get rid of that driveway or as I think one public commenter or one of the letters, we said, being bold in how we go about ensuring some of those things, which leads me to the intersection of El Camino and Middle. And I would like our Complete Streets Commission, if possible, to start thinking about that intersection a little bit more and looking at some of those design menu items that you were talking about. And even exploring the concept of the the protected intersection, just having a conversation around that whole intersection. I also wanted to point out that we got, you know, we had so many emails coming in and our residents live these streets, you know, every minute of every day. And some of them were talking about flooding issues and pavement concerns. And so I would just ask staff to please go through those comments and kind of mine them for maybe non-project related feedback, but other morsels that we got, because we don't often get this net of comments. And yeah, I think I think we just see what happens with this pilot. And for those who aren't hearing what they wanted to hear tonight, you know, no decision is easy. I hope you can see that we've been very thoughtful. And we're, we we make the best decisions we can with the information we have at the time we make them. And I think this pilot thing kind of really is going to be a good thing for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I actually do have two, I do believe it's redundant with what Vice Mayor Wilson said, but there were definitely two places, the flooding problems at the intersection of Maury and Kenwood with Middle and also an excessive roadway crown at San Mateo Drive and Middle were two remarks that stood out to me. I also want to just make a comment for anyone who has not read CCIN. There was, one of the emails that came in was was a petition with sixty-two signatures in favor of safety and removing certainly one side and many of the residents on that sixty-two person petition were in favor of removing both sides of traffic essentially really emphasis on safety. And so I guess with that in mind, do we need to revise this resolution to give staff direction forward? Or do you have the information that you need?
So I think, thank you. I think we need to, based on the direction we're getting, we need to bring the resolution back at a future time because this resolution, if you passed it, wouldn't do the thing that you want to do.
Right. Thank you. And I will say, I welcome any resident who wants to talk with me about my experience on Santa Cruz Avenue or if they're just don't want to hear my experience, want to give me their experience on Middle, please reach out to me or to other council members and more than happy to talk to people. I encourage it. I've spoken with many, many people already, but always encourage people to reach out and talk with us. And I see Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thanks. So it seems as though the council direction is going to go differently than than I would. So I just
Yeah, thanks. So it seems as though the council direction is going to go differently than, than I would. So I just wanted to. Just a couple of questions I want to clarify from Mr. Wild. Since the issue of, of safety came up. Is it, is it the staff's opinion that, that, that to bike lane or removing parking from both sides of the street? Is, is safer than, than just removing it from one side of the street and removing it in the areas on the other side? That, that you have designated?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So I think we have to go back a couple of staff reports. We did try to sort of lay out what we saw as the pros and cons of each. Of the options. I think there are some safety benefits of the sort that were mentioned here tonight, which is to say that there is more space. You know, we do see, I'm impressed you found pictures of only two kids riding side by side, because I think it's usually more in my experience. So, you know, those kinds of things where we know that behavior is happening, the kind of weaving in and out sorts of issues. Doring is certainly something that is, is an area of concern. And I think what we did is, we, if we had proceeded with a. If we were to proceed at some point with a parking on one side design, we would obviously try to minimize the impact of that. So there are safety benefits and then there are trade offs on the other side. And I think based on the conversations we had had with residents. And with Complete Streets, one thing or another, we, we were trying to split the, the difference a little bit, but I, I do see some safety benefits.
And is the street in its, its current state, which obviously is, is, is. I, I think you would say is, is, is less safe than either option. It is, what has been the analysis when it comes to sort of like accidents, like? Is there some clear data analysis that suggests that, that it is, it is unsafe now?
Yeah, so we did look at collision data on the corridor throughout the quarter for a number of years. And we also looked at speeds, which is an important concern as well. So kind of using all that data, we do see issues. We do see safety issues on the street that we are trying to address. Absolutely.
And when you say safety issues, you, you're talking about accidents that happened, like incidents, like, like actual accidents.
But yeah, I, I guess I'm talking about two things. One, one is actual collisions that have occurred on the quarter. But the other is sort of the risk of collisions and trying to minimize the chance of collisions occurring.
In, in, in like, just in the past year, like how many accidents have there been?
It's a great question, and I might turn to one of my friends on the phone to answer, because I think we do have specific data. So I don't have that in front of me right now.
Don't worry about it. It's, it's fine. I, I, okay, you go, but I, I'm not done, but you can go.
I just wanted to answer one of your questions and that's, I met with some residents last Tuesday night. And heard that there had been an adult taken to the hospital, an adult bicyclist who'd been hit on Middle Avenue. Taken to the. To the hospital that night. There definitely are. Collisions happening between bikes and cars. And this was even an adult cyclist at about 5:00 PM. There's also, I've, I'm just aware of numerous times. When there have been collisions, when there's been a door, someone opening the door, a bicyclist ran into it, had to be taken to the hospital. It, it is definitely a point of concern.
I would just say, I, I do think that we should be a little cautious when we say things about like safety, like, right? Because I, I haven't seen the actual data. I don't know if there's like real empirical analysis. I can say that like, the, 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 that removing from both is, is, is imminently going to be safer than removing from one. And that the current state is, is like, is, is unsafe. If it were unsafe, then I, I think we would say the kids shouldn't bike down there at all. And, and obviously that, that happened. So that's just something I would, I would point out. I do want to say that like, because I've heard it, you, you know. Actions or statements about sort of bold, courageous and being unafraid. It, it's about sort of making decisions that you think are, are right, like, right? You can, you can be courageous in making the wrong decision. And so I, I just want to make it clear that, that like, I don't necessarily think this is an issue between, you know. A courageous decision and a not courageous decision. I, I think it's between a decision that you think is, is best for. All of the residents of Menlo Park, all of the stakeholders in the situation, making it safe, safer. Providing more of the transportation infrastructure for, for bikes that we know is a value. But also balancing that with regards to, to what neighbors and residents on that street have understood as, as like. As, as the, the norm of, of having some, some on-street, on-street parking. So if there were clear that like someone could make this case that like, removing all of the parking and, and it guarantees safety. Then, then I'm, I'm all there. Again, I, I still want to see what the impact is on, on residents. Who, who reside on the street, but. But again, I, I don't know that that, that case is, is being made like solidly. Like again, I'm, I'm in favor of the infrastructure. Like I said, I was in favor of, of removing the parking from, from one side of the street. But I do, I do have concerns about the impact of residents. And I do have concerns that. We buy into these larger ideas that, that sound good. But, but don't actually sort of, I, I think deliver in, in terms of the actual real sort of safety benefit. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, and I appreciate your insights. I would just encourage us or people to look at the future. With Middle Plaza coming, which they are. That will be putting many more people on the street with Underpass hopefully coming. Sooner rather than later, which again will be bringing many people both to and from Middle Avenue. As well as, as we get more of the e-bikes there, which is people have said is different speeds. We have more people on scooters. We have more bike riders generally and that it is very important to. Look to the future and really design something that is, will take us forward. Because this has been, as Councilmember Mueller said. This has been a long time coming and we are unlikely to revisit it anytime in the near future. Once we actually do make the, once it gets on the ground. So, Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, and I would say this is my third major infrastructure sidewalk bike lane project in the last six years. And they come with scars. And if you don't think a council has to be courageous to do them, you haven't had the scars from doing it in your own district yet. It comes with scars. People, when you affect someone's house on, or something happening in front of someone's house to make a safety improvement. You, it's never easy and people don't always, even if it turns out good, they don't always forgive you. And so, you know, I'm just glad that, as I said before, that the council is moving forward with this. It's not going to be perfect for everyone in the community. We'll pilot it out to try to get as close as we can. We want to get as much feedback from everybody to understand what the impacts are. And if we're making a mistake. We're going to try to bring as many people along with us as possible. And if we have to redesign as a result of that pilot, we will. I want to make clear to people the reason why I would support a pilot that's well-designed. We're not voting tonight. I actually am going to care how that pilot is designed and we get feedback. Is because it's my intention to actually really be close to the community in the implementation of that pilot to figure out if we're doing the right thing. But, but I also am not, I'm, I'm not, I've done this, been through this too many times not to say. There are going to be people who are going to be unhappy and it's going to come with scars. But I'm glad that the council is moving forward.
And some people that are unhappy when the decisions made do turn. I can say from.
So some do, some don't.
Yes, very true. Thank you so much for. All the comments, for all the interest in this and for all the input. I think it will make for a much better project. Thank you. All right. The next regular business item is waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance repealing and replacing Menlo Park. Municipal Code Section 2.04.190 relating to filling city, city council vacancies. And adopt a resolution establishing the process for appointment of candidates to city council seats to fill vacancies. To introduce the item is City Attorney Nira Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. As the council knows, we initiated this discussion on August 23rd. At that time, we discussed the municipal code provisions that establish a process for filling a council member vacancy. And we discussed that those provisions are likely preempted because they are inconsistent. With state law, specifically with respect to timing for calling an election to fill a vacancy. When one is created on the city council. On August 23rd, in order to remedy these inconsistencies. The council provided direction to return with an ordinance modifying the city's current council member vacancy provisions. The council provided direction to draft an ordinance to defer to the state process for filling council member vacancies. The state process allows the city council to elect on a case-by-case basis. Whether to fill a council, a vacancy by election or appointment. The ordinance sits before you this evening for first reading does exactly that. The proposed, proposed ordinance defers to state law instead of recodifying all the provisions of state law. I've drafted the ordinance to just simply refer to the relevant provisions, because as we know, those provisions might change. Which is why we are currently finding ourselves in a position with a preempted ordinance. So the ordinance simply defers to the state law provisions. And would allow the council to follow those provisions for appointment of a vacancy, should a vacancy occur. What the state laws do not provide is a process for appointing when the council elects to fill a vac- vacancy. By appointment. The state laws do dictate the timing for appointment. But do not dictate the specifics as to how the council can recruit for applicants. Interview applicants, interview applicant, review applications. And ultimately, how to select an applicant to become the council member appointee. So what is before you this evening is both a first reading of the ordinance that again is quite simple. And just defers to the state law provisions and a proposed resolution. That establishes criteria and a process for appointing a council member. Should the council elect to use that option for filling a vacancy. The resolution is, has been formed based on other cities' appointment processes. And has given deference to the commission appointment process that the city utilizes. Both the city clerk and the city manager have reviewed it for substantial conformity with that process. But the council does not have to utilize the process laid out in the resolution, nor is there any. Got guidance in state law as to what process the council must utilize. So there is a pretty wide discretion that you can employ this evening. And we are happy to take comments and questions on proposed revisions. The application process laid out in the proposed resolution. We will then go back and revise that resolution and bring it back to you a second reading of the ordinance. Which we propose to take place a week from today on August 20th. With that, I'm happy to take questions or if the council would like me to walk through the application procedures. I'm happy to do that, but it's in your packet and has been available to the council and to the public as well. So happy to defer to the council on that.
Actually, I think it would be helpful if you could quickly walk through the process.
Okay, so the way the process works, and again, this is somewhat similar. To our commission appointment process. So upon determining that the council will utilize the appointment process. As opposed to calling an election to fill a vacancy. The clerk publishes a notice of the vacancy in the newspaper of general circulation. Advertises in local online media and post the appointment. Or post the application on the city website. This we do with our commission appointments as well. There are details in the resolution as to what the notice shall provide, including the date and the time and the place. Of the meeting where the city council will con- conduct interviews of applicants. And then the deadlines for submitting the application. The, the application process also requires candidates. To provide written answers to a series of questions. Again, these were primarily taken from other cities in California who have similar processes. And the questions that are on this list were taken from a number of other city clients and their particular interests. Again, the council can revise this list as it sees fit. The applicants will fill out those questionnaires. And then the city clerk will receive all applications and questionnaires, verify that they're complete. Verify that they were submitted in a timely manner. The next step is that interviews will take place before the city council. We have drafted a provision that governs the order in which interviews take place. There'd be some sort of random drawing so that the inner, there's no. Predetermined benefit to one or, or more candidates in terms of the order in which interviews take place. And then there's some timing requirements in terms of. Statement by the applicant followed by questions from the city council. The resolution does mandate that each council member have an opportunity. To ask questions and to receive responses from the candidate. Based on that question's provided in the questionnaire. Again, those can be modified. And then the public has the opportunity to provide public comment. The city council then has a discussion on the applicants. As you know, we do this with commission appointments as well. And then at the end of this, those steps. The council can move to nominate someone. And the council would that vote on appointment of that person. And a majority vote would result in appointment of that person. The process also requires swearing in at that time. This is a step that is important because the government code does allow. There's a new provision that was adopted in 2015 that revised the state law provisions regarding appointment. That allows a vacating council member to participate in the appointment. So I, that is one provision that I would like to leave in so that it's clear that. If a council member is vacating their seat upon the appointment of another, another council member. That that council member is appointed at that time, that, the new council member. And that is the process.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I. To waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance repealing and replacing Menlo Park Municipal Code Section 2.04.9. Point 190 related to filling city council vacancies and adopt a resolution establishing the process for appointment of candidates to city council seats. To fill vacancies. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on regular item I two. Seeing no hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Would anyone like to start with comments on this? I will go ahead then with, I have two comments. One is on. In the analysis on two C. Where it says that if a question, if the questionnaire is not provided on or before the date specified by the city clerk. The candidate shall not be interviewed by the council, by the city council. What I would like to do is add, just for clarity. What I would like to do is add, just for clarity. That the candidate shall not be interviewed by the city council and shall not be eligible for appointment. So just clarifying what, what was implicit in the. Text and then my second comment is a little bit, has a little bit more to it and that's on the analysis. The two F election by motion. It currently is something where we look at the council members one by, I'm sorry, we look at candidates. We move one candidate and then do the voting on it and then move to the next candidate and I would like to see. It more like our current appointment process where all candidates are considered simultaneously. Rather than individually and I would also like to see voting by secret ballot. With majority vote required for appointment and multiple rounds if there's no majority on the first vote. Where the candidate with the fewest votes is removed in each round. Councilmember Mueller.
I wouldn't support secret ballot. I think it's really important to understand who's, it's, it's a transparent vote that people know who's voted for.
I'm sorry, it would be a secret ballot, so everyone would write down what they. Who they were voting for, but then it would be totally transparent. The city count, the city clerk would then read the names, so it would at that point, but what would, what I'm trying to avoid. Is that. What I, well, I'm trying to do is have everyone put forward their. The person that they think is the best candidate rather than have anything. Have one see. The first person, the second person, the third person, how people are voting. If someone, especially for example, if the. If the, if someone wants to have, to broadcast who they are supporting, they are certainly welcome. They would be welcome to do that in the discussion portion, so you could say, I, you know, I support this person, whatever, or. One could be nominating that person, but as far as I would personally prefer to see. Where each of us choose our best candidate than the city clerk actually says that who voted for which candidate. So everything is entirely known, just when you're voting for the candidate. It is, you don't know what your fellow council members.
Okay, I get it, alright, I understand what you're saying, so when the clerk reads it off, she'll read who voted for.
Absolutely, I'm sorry, thank you so much, no.
Who they voted for.
Absolutely, it's just that.
You don't want it to be like anyone influenced by who.
Thank you, that's exactly correct, yes.
I don't, that's fine with me, I just.
Oh, good.
Because, you know, I mean candidly back before, we use these buttons. And so like, and so we don't use them anymore and it's kind of, and I actually hate, I'm always second. Like I hate it, like it's sometimes like, can we reverse the order so at least I don't go second?
Absolutely, that's exactly correct and I will let, if city manager Murphy wants to say something, I know he's been working on this.
Thank you, Mayor, I am working with the city clerk to try to reinstitute the use of the buttons moving forward, so just. We're excited to hear that you're interested in doing that, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, yes, and I think it's incredibly important that we have complete transparency. Thank you. Councilmember Combs.
So. I hate to be the stick in the mud, but I don't, I don't quite under, to me, it seems like we're sort of over engineering a process. I mean, we're elected officials, we have volunteered to make decisions and I don't, to be frank. Nothing anyone up here has voted on has influenced me, or if it has influenced me, I, I think it's been. A valid way to influence me, which is part of the process.
You always vote first.
Yeah, so. So I'm a little leery of, of like creating this process by which you sort of, and I appreciate that. Ultimately, you, you, there is some transparency, but are we creating a process to solve a problem that isn't really a problem? And that's, that, that's the issue, I think I have a little bit with it. Because if someone, you know, is going to be like influenced, you know. In a way that, that isn't positive by some, where the council is, is leaning, then, then. Then that's probably a person who shouldn't be up here, but they're up here and so you, you have to deal with it and so. Again, I'm, I'm just a little bit leery, I, I don't have any, anything against necessarily the process, it's just this, this sort of over engineering. What should be as, as simple as possible.
Sorry, continue.
No, but that, that's, and my second question is that since this is a first reading. If you're adopting that, then does that mean that we need another first reading?
No, the ordinance is, is separate, so ideally we'll take a vote on the first reading tonight and then. To the extent you have changes on the resolution establishing the guidelines for appointment, that would come back.
Okay.
And we can move the ordinance forward.
Thank you, city clerk Karen, could you actually refresh? My memory as far as, how, I believe what I just described is how we did the last commission appointments and that's. How all of this evolved.
Can I, and Mayor Nash, do you mind if I take it back even just a little bit further? So I want to say twenty eighteen, you actually used to do handwritten ballot voting for advisory bodies for our commissions and committees. Each council member would fill in the names or check the names, they'd give those ballots to me, I would display them on the screen. By who voted for who and then by majority vote, that person would be appointed. It was just, it was a very, it was a much longer process. And then we did update it recently where now the appointment process and selection process for advisory bodies is. We ask each of the city council members for nomination. And whoever receives the most nominations is then appointed. So if there's two vacancies and we have three commissioners, we take two names from each city council member. And the person or persons who received the most nominations is then appointed. So that is kind of similar to what, you know, you were thinking with. The ballot option and so again, so we have done it in the past, the ballot, like I said, it just took, it was a longer process. We were dealing with seven, you know, seven different bodies, different vacancies, so it was a longer process. When we're dealing with one city council member vacancy, I don't see the ballot. Process being a huge deterrent or a huge issue there. And again, at the end of the ballot voting, it's all displayed on screen and then verbalized. Which council member voted for which candidate. Or you can again defer to the current process with. How we're doing advisory bodies now where we go around and say, you know, councilmember Combs, name your, name your nomination, Mayor Nash, your nomination. Like, city manager Murphy was saying, we are looking to reinstall the vote cast system. And when we have all five members on the dais at that time. I, I, it could be a completely different looking process, we could put the five names on your, or the candidates' names on your screens, you select your candidate. So it wouldn't even be necessarily a ballot, you'd actually be using the vote cast system, so.
So, thank you, honestly, I am fine with any of those options. My intent is to, right now it's written so that we have one nomination put forward and then we vote on that. And if that person gets, gets a majority, we don't go any further. I am fine as long as we, there's not a scramble to just get that one nomination out there and no one else is considered. So what you described is fine and then. What, I'll just, great, councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I'll just say I am supportive of the idea of like, again, every name being considered at the same time. I, I'm very supportive of that and I'm also realizing that like, this whole process gets thrown off if someone is remote. So I don't, I'll, I'll, I'll just move on. Like if someone is not in, for, if we're doing this tonight and councilmember Taylor, like that, that whole sort of. The, the, you know, unless you, you guys set it up where she can do it at home or whoever's at home. So I, again, maybe I'm overthinking and maybe I thought you were over engineering, maybe I'm overthinking it now. But I, I guess we'll, we'll see how it plays out.
So Mayor Nash, may I just make one brief comment?
I actually was going to say, please, just whatever you suggest is good.
So what I'm thinking is, I think the intention was, and city attorney Doherty can correct me if I'm wrong. Was to do it how we have been handling our current advisory bodies where we go around. And take the nomination from each of the council members and the person, the candidate who receives the most nominations is then appointed. And again, I think that was kind of the direction we wanted to go in this resolution, I don't think it's as. Clear compared to, because I'm looking at both of them side by side, our commission policy and the reso. So maybe just updating that election by motion to the, how we do the selection process currently for advisory bodies.
That works for me, thank you. And now that I'm looking, now that I'm hearing it, yes, I can read the exact same text and understand that that was the intent, but. So just clarifying it to the, what we do now is terrific, thank you. Any other comments, councilmember Taylor, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, Mayor Nash.
Vice Mayor Willison.
About this voting thing or about. Anything else?
Anything to do with the vacancy at this point.
Okay, this agenda, okay, thank you, Mayor Nash. Yeah, I thought. A couple, on the questionnaire. Two questions that I might consider adding. Is why are you interested in serving? Why do you, why do you want to do this? And potentially, do you plan on running in the next election? So I just wanted to throw out those ideas, I'm, I'm not married to them. The other thing I wanted to point out was on page I two point eight. E three. Where it talks about council members being able to ask questions not on the questionnaire. That it would be approved by the mayor. I was, I don't know if I want to, to stick to the script, I don't think it's fair to the mayor to be the arbiter. Well, I don't know, I, I, that jumped out at me, that that could get hairy. So I feel like we either should stick to the script or allow follow up questions or additional questions, but I don't know if there should be like. Judge of that, so I just, I'm curious to hear if anyone else saw that and was curious about it, but. Again, I'm not married to any of these, the, the things that jumped out at me, it's discussion items.
Councilmember Mueller.
I don't know. I don't know, so. I feel like, kind of like when we're there, the council kind of deviate from its wants. I, I mean, just because we're talking about it, I'll say the idea, the question about whether or not a person will run for council or not afterwards. I really don't, I don't want to, I don't care if they do or don't, like. All that matters to me is that you get the best person possible to represent the district as quickly as you can. And I don't want to buy, and if they are the best person, I don't want to bind them from running later on, so. But. I'm, so I don't, I'm fine.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I mean, the, the questions are fine with me, if. As long as, is there like an option to like sort of not answer, or I don't know. Especially for, for the, I mean, yeah, I, I don't care about adding, adding the questions. And then what was the other thing?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm not married to these, so I don't have a need to include them, they just, I was like brain, I was reading through and I was like, oh, what about that? What about that, and I just thought I'd bring it up, I, actually, the question of you were going to run again, I put in there. Because of you, councilmember Combs, because that was something.
I want to be able to like hold people to it, which we can't.
Yeah, you can't hold people, you can't hold people to it, we can ask the question.
Yeah.
So that was actually.
Yeah, for, for some.
For you, but I don't need to put any of this in.
And I'm, I'm sure like, the extent to which, like there is some press coverage, they will be asked that question, like, right? Like are you, and, and so I'm sure it's, it's, so if it's in, in our questionnaire, I, I think it's fine. And as far as the mayor being the arbiter, I'm, yeah, fine with that not being the case because I'm going to ask the questions I want to ask.
I'm not sure if I should be looking at city attorney Doherty or city clerk Karen, what would you like from us at this point? I mean, I will. I'd like the one clarification, if possible, on C, but I, that's sort of up to you. And I'm totally fine with the process, I think it needs a little bit of perhaps clarification, but what you. If that was the intent of what you were doing, I'm completely fine with it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly clarify two F, I think we have good direction from the council, we'll add some details. That more closely mirror our current process. And then I have noted the change to two C, that's also a good clarifying change. I'm hearing from you, councilmember Combs, that there's a desire to move the, remove the language that says only the mayor can approve deviations to the questionnaire. We can make that change also if the council's okay with that.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yeah, city attorney Doherty, I have a question. Is there any obligation that you ask the same questions to each candidate?
There's not, it's up to you, I mean, the, the council, I believe, should have the discretion to ask whatever questions. It believes are relevant based on the applicant before the council.
Thank you for the clarification.
And if I understood correctly, other candidates can be, or probably will be listening to. The prior interview so that.
Yep, it'll be in a pub, it's a, the process has, it, it's a public meeting where they are interviewed. Before the public and the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs.
And just really quickly, and, and so like, is it random, like who goes first, like is that, it's like, how do we do that with planning commission? You pick a number out of a hat, it's.
So with planning commission interviews, it's typically done by alpha last name. A we can go hat, you know, I've got the really fun wheel like muse.
As drafted, there's a random lottery, we haven't specified how that lottery would be, I don't think we should specify that level of detail. Like give the clerk some ability to figure out the best way for the day. But it would be a random selection of, to dictate the order of interview.
So shall we make a motion on this?
Yep, so you'll make a motion, assuming the council wants to proceed with the ordinance, you'll make a motion to waive first reading, read by title only. And move the first reading to second reading, you will not make a motion on the resolution and we'll return with that a week from today.
So I will go ahead and make the motion. Let's wait till we have everyone back up at the dais, so maybe a minute. City clerk Karen, could you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, so I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Nash and a second by city councilmember Combs. To introduce by title only and waive further reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Menlo Park repealing and replacing section two point. Zero four point one nine zero, filling of vacancies on the city council of chapter two point zero four. With title two of the Menlo Park Municipal Code. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City councilmember Mueller.
Yep.
City councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The final, the final regular business item today is I three, adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the salary schedule as of September twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. To introduce the item is Inter Administrative Services Director Mary Morris, Mayorga.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Nash, Vice Mayor Willison, city council members, staff and members of the public. This item is a recommend, staff recommendation that the city council approve an amendment to the salary schedule, adding the position Public Works Supervisor in trees. This would become effective in, on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, if the action is approved. You may recall the last time that the salary schedule was approved was as a component of the budget adoption for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Just as a bit of background, fiscal year, in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, the city council authorized a service level enhancement, adding one FTE to the tree maintenance crew for a total of three maintenance workers, one senior maintenance worker, and one city arborist. The team was fully staffed at that point during fall and winter of twenty twenty one, twenty two. However, two of the three maintenance worker positions are currently vacant with recruitments in progress. And the city arborist began very recently in spring twenty twenty two. The Public Works Department is struggling a bit to maintain a high level of customer service that the city strives to provide to the community in daily operations and respond to emergency tree requests. Also, given current drought conditions and approaching fall, winter, fall weather, staffing will be critical to provide adequate response capabilities for storm events, down trees and limbs. The requested salary schedule amendment would convert a senior maintenance worker position to the Public Worker Supervisor Trees with no requested increase in FTE. This would provide opportunities for employee development and advancement, support employee retention, and provide clear division of responsibilities between the arborist and the Public Works Supervisor in trees. Just as kind of an overall picture of the functions of the position, the Public Works Supervisor of Trees would oversee daily operations, manage the contract with West Coast Arborists, and be responsible for providing a high level of customer service interacting with the public. The salary ranges for new classifications are set based on internal alignment. So for this position, it's closely aligned with Public Works Supervisor for parks as well as for streets. So it's recommended that the salary range be set at the same level, one hundred thousand seven oh seven to one twenty one, three eighty eight. That is listed within the resolution for adoption and is also included on the proposed salary schedule amendment. This would not require a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, as the additional costs can be absorbed by the current vacancy factor. We included the annualized cost differential between the two positions for a full year of thirty two thousand nine hundred and fifty six. That would not be the case for this current year because it would be a partial year. And also, and with a particular staff member, they're not at the top step. So that's the absolute maximum, which wouldn't apply exactly in this year. So the resolution adopting the salary amendment is attached as well as the proposed salary schedule. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I three, adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the salary schedule as of September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item I three. Seeing no hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. We are now open for a city council discussion, or if anyone would like to make a motion. Vice Mayor Willison.
Yeah, I'd like to approve the resolution to approve the amendments to the salary schedule.
Thank you. I will second that. City Clerk Karen, could you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Willison and a second by Mayor Nash to adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the salary schedule as of September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city man, city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. This time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item J one, city council agenda topics, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on information item J one. Seeing no hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any city council questions on any of the information items? Seeing none, we will continue to the city manager's report. City Manager Justin Murphy.
Great, thank you, Mayor Nash. This evening, I'm going to emphasize some job openings that the city has. So most recently, we've been advertising for a number of positions to be able to reactivate our gymnastics program. So those have been advertised, should be closing shortly. And hopefully we remain on track to be able to reopen that program. This fall, we have had some luck with the, some of the hirings to date. So we're, we're looking forward to providing more detailed updates on that in the near future. And then the second opening that I'd like to advertise is a recent posting for the cities. This isn't city, Assistant City Manager. So looking forward to being able to encourage applicants for that critical position with the city. So that's open through the beginning of October. So looking forward to being able to bring additional people on board. So the one other thing I just emphasized, we do have back to back meetings. We'll be back, back again next, next Tuesday, next packet coming out this Thursday. So that will be the focus of my attention the next couple of days.
Thank you. Good luck on both. Are there any reports from city council members since the August twenty third city council meeting? Councilmember Mueller. All right. Seeing none, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much.